Field City Council, it is now Monday, June 1st at 6:20. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Counselor Gomez?
Present.
Present. Counselor Whitfield? Absent. Counselor Davila?
Present.
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 Counselor Fenton?
Present.
Present. Counselor Curran?
Present.
Present. Counselor Ramos?
Present.
Present. Counselor Walsh?
Present.
Present. Counselor Williams? Absent. Counselor Allen?
Present.
Present. Counselor Letterman?
Present.
Present. Counselor Edwards?
Present.
Present. Counselor Brown? Absent. Counselor Hurst? Counselor Hurst?
He's muted.
Sarno, present.
I'm all done with the roll, Counselor. You're muted.
Hello?
There you go.
Thank you. For those of you who don't know, Counselor Williams' uncle passed away last week, so our condolences go out to the Williams family and also to our former colleague, Counselor Buddy Williams' brother. So we certainly wish them and their family well. And he won't be joining us for this meeting and possibly our next meeting. So I will keep you updated. We will now rise for a moment of silence. And at this time, I will hand it over to Counselor Allen.
Thanks, Mr. President. I have a little bit to say before this moment of silence, so it'll take a couple minutes. I've been greatly affected by the video of the killing of George Floyd. It got me thinking, hearing him yell out, cry out, "I can't breathe." So I called Counselor, Counsel President Hurst yesterday, and asked him what he was planning to do regarding this situation. So here's my statement. He, we talked and he asked me to handle the moment of silence. It will take a couple minutes. Like all of you, I have watched the COVID-19 stuff endlessly and the 100,000 people that have died. Like all of you, I have watched the senseless and brutal killing of George Floyd. Like all of you, I sit on a council that is elected to represent and to take care of the people in our city and to be involved in running our city and providing service and hope to Springfield. As a result of that, I called Counsel President Hurst and he asked me, we had a good discussion, and he asked me to handle the moment of silence. He was receptive to my call and asked me to do what I wanted with the moment of silence. I've mentioned three things that I thought we should discuss tonight. The most, the one that prompted me to call him was the George Floyd situation. But in preparation for this, I watched endless news on coronavirus and George Floyd on CNN. I watched the "I Can't Breathe" special last night on CNN. I listened to my son's podcast on racism. I listened to the "I Have a Dream" speech. I looked up quotes, mostly from MLK. I thought about the coronavirus endlessly. I remembered a thought about the tornado, which affected our city, many neighborhoods in it, and my own neighborhood. I listened to Andrew Cuomo's press conferences. I listened to Mayor Sarno and Commissioners Carlton Harris and Clapham this morning in the citywide update. I mentioned the tornado, even though the tornado did not affect everybody in the city physically, it had a major impact on our city. And the tornado was nine years ago today at 4:32. So we hit, so many people in my neighborhood were affected by that, and I'm sure the same goes for Melvin's neighborhood and Adam's neighborhood. So let's look at these three situations. First was a weather event. We have mostly recovered from the weather event, the tornado. In nine years, most buildings have been rebuilt, and the recent completion of the East Forest Park Library, which was a big goal of the neighborhood, is a concrete representation of the completion of that goal. We are mostly past the tornado at this point. We did that through individual determination, public support, and personal strength given to each other. The second challenge has been the coronavirus. We have figured out how to beat the coronavirus. In many states, including our own state of Massachusetts, we have flattened the curve. The numbers are going down due to strong attention and discipline to three main things: staying home, social distancing when you go out, and wearing masks, which we do to protect each other. The third thing is the George Floyd situation. We watched George Floyd die in the hands of the police. We all heard the cries for "I can't breathe" and wondered what we could do about it. Since we are the City Council of Springfield, it seemed appropriate, and it's what I said to President Hurst, that we should talk about this. At least, we should acknowledge it in our meeting. So that's what I'm trying to do. In the George Floyd situation, we saw a human being who was killed in front of our eyes. It happened to one person, but it happened to all of us. There is a virus here, also a virus of prejudice and racism and police brutality that goes back years and centuries in American history. On a human level, it was awful to watch. It's awful to see what happened to that human being. As a result, I spent some time trying to craft a message so it's appropriate and hopefully a message you can all relate to. My message is that from the tornado, it was a local weather event. The tornado happened to us, but just some of us. We figured out how to beat it, and we have mostly beat it. The second thing was the COVID-19 pandemic. It happened to us, all of us, and we have figured out what to do. We don't always do the right thing, but we know what to do, and if we do it right, we can beat it. The George Floyd situation, however, is different. This is a human being who was killed in front of our eyes. It happened to one person, but it happened to all of us. There is a virus here also. A virus of prejudice and racism and police brutality that goes back years and centuries in American history on a human level. I watched the "I Have a Dream" speech and Martin Luther King on August 28th of 1963. I watched that live, by the way, and I listened to it again today. He spoke about police brutality at that point. Fifty-seven years later, we're dealing with the same issue. So I found a couple quotes that I thought were appropriate. "We may have all come on different ships, but we're in the same boat now." That's a Martin Luther King quote. "And the time is always right to do what is right." So tonight, there will be two moments of silence. In many of the school shootings and things like that, we always hear people say, "Don't just give us our thoughts and prayers, but tell us what to do." So the first moment of silence, which will begin in a second here, is to reflect on the horrors of these three things and take a little moment to think about it. And then when that moment of silence ends, I'll make a couple statements about the next moment of silence. Thank you. The next moment of silence is to begin to consider our actions, to make human kindness our preferred way and normal way of living. This is the moment of silence to think about what actions could we take? What legislation could we put forward? How can we change hearts and minds? How can we work together? In the "I Have a Dream" speech, MLK talked about police brutality. This moment of silence, think about what we can do, because this has been an issue in our own city as well in the past. Think about what we can do here and everywhere to improve our community. This next second moment of silence starts now. Thank you. In closing, I'll offer those two MLK quotes again. "We may have all come on different ships, but we're in the same boat now." "The time is always right to do what is right." When someone in our community or in our big community of America cannot breathe, it's our job to give them air. We need to make sure that all of our people are able to breathe. That's it. Thank you, President Hurst.
Thank you. For the council and their guests, please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, limited, redemptive, and justice. I'll start off this meeting by thanking Counselor Allen for everything that you said today. Counselor Allen is accurate. He called me yesterday and he asked me, if counselors and their guests could please put their microphones on mute. Counselor Allen asked me what to do, or what I was planning on doing. And to be honest with you, I was out in my yard, and I wasn't sure what it was that I was going to do. As I know, as the President, I have a platform and can certainly have a moment of silence for whatever it is that I see fit to have a moment of silence for. For this particular issue and after watching Mr. Floyd and after watching what occurred to Mr. Floyd, I wasn't sure what I could do. Because oftentimes, when you're a person of color, you're seeking perfection, and certainly perfection, more than the person to the left or to the right of you who doesn't look like you. And so, most of you who are involved in politics know that political perfection is almost impossible. So knowing that I probably would have said something that I might have regretted and highlighting what happened to Mr. Floyd, I decided, one, that I was tired personally of speaking out, which I think I've done on a number of occasions here in Springfield and wished that others would follow. Sometimes, others did. Most times, folks followed that didn't look, I mean, that looked just like me. So I thought it was impressive that Counselor Allen was willing to give us a moment of silence in honor of George Floyd. And I also thought it was the right moment for the city of Springfield for someone to speak out against police brutality that doesn't look like me. And so, Counselor Allen, I appreciate you. You made it, you made my job much easier this evening, and I can continue to strive and aspire towards that political perfection, not knowing what I would have had to say if I had to give that moment of silence. So, thank you, and I appreciate you for that. Madam Clerk, will you please call the first item on the agenda?
The first item on the agenda is the minutes from March 9th, 2020.
Can we take items one through three together? Is that possible, Madam Clerk, or do we have to entertain them separately?
You can take them all together if no one has any issues with them.
If there are no objections, then we'll take items one through three.
Can we, can we recognize Counselor Whitfield first, please? I'm sorry.
We certainly can. Counselor Whitfield?
Here. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
So, item one are the minutes from March 9th. Item two are the minutes from March 16th. And item three are the minutes from May 11th, all in 2020.
Is there any discussion from the council regarding the minutes? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Unapproving the minutes from March 9th, March 16th, and May 11th. Counselor Gomez?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Whitfield?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Davila? Counselor Davila?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Fenton?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Curran?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Ramos?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Walsh?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Williams, absent. Counselor Allen? Counselor Allen?
All right, now I'm unmuted. Okay. I'm trying to figure out this landline, sorry. Yes.
Thank you. Yes. Counselor Letterman?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Edwards?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Brown, absent. Counselor Hurst?
Yes. The minutes are approved. Madam Clerk, will you please call the next item on the agenda?
The next item on the agenda is the April Revenue versus Expenditure Report.
Is there anyone present to speak to this item? If you could just state your name and address for the record?
Thank you, Mr. President. Patrick Burns, 98, Clement Street, Springfield. Tonight, you have the April Revenue and Expenditure Report. There are three highlights I'd like to point out on the revenue side. MGM Springfield made a partial payment of its Section 121A on April 1st. That was 5.5 million. The city was expecting a payment of 7.8 million. Also, tax collections are at 85% real estate and personal property. This is as opposed to 93%. Last year at this time, this is attributable to the movement of the due date from May 1st to June 1st. And lastly, departmental revenues are down 1.4 million. The major drivers are a reduction in park and recreation revenue, building permits, and parking fines.
Are there any questions or comments from the council? Counselor Walsh?
Pat, do you attribute all that to the virus, and will we catch up?
Yes. Everything, the movement of the due date and the the partial payment made by MGM and also the decrease in departmental revenue is attributable to the virus. And it's not something that we're going to make up entirely this fiscal year. With the tax collection, we're hoping with the extended due date that we'll see robust collections this month and also going into July and August.
So, to follow up on that question, if we're not going to 100% get those revenues, is there anything in particular you're concerned about being impacted?
The city's strategy is to make this up on the expenditure side. And a hiring and spending increase has been implemented. So we're hoping that savings on the expenditure side will compensate this loss of revenue.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Walsh. Counselor Whitfield?
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Counselor Allen, for the moment of silence and what you said. I really appreciate it from the bottom of my heart. It was appreciative to hear from a non-person of color, so I just wanted to thank you for that first. And I think you answered my question, because I would like to hear, we hear about the revenue loss every time, but we don't hear about the decrease in expenditure. So if we could get that information, as well as the decrease in expenditures, to see how much we are really losing, like the revenue minus the expenditures, so we can see what the true loss is, because we only hear about the revenue. But you kind of answered that it will offset some of the revenue loss. So thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Whitfield. Seeing no other questions in the queue, Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll on this petition?
Unaccepting the report. Counselor Gomez?
Booker T. Washington, 1984. Yes.
Yes. Counselor Whitfield?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Davila?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Fenton?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Curran?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Ramos?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Walsh?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Williams, absent. Counselor Allen?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Letterman?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Edwards?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Brown, absent. Counselor Hurst?
Yes. The report is approved. Madam Clerk, can you please call Grants 2 through 7 together, please?
Grants 2 through 7. Grant 2, Tobacco Control Grant Increase in the amount of $30,000. Springfield City Library donations in the amount of $21,974.01. Health and Human Services donations in the amount of $8,794.57. FY20 Pedestrian and Bicycle Safety Grant in the amount of $6,000. TJO donations in the amount of $1,997. And a donation to the Police and Fire in the amount of $200.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll on these grants?
Unaccepting Grants 2 through 7. Counselor Gomez?
Benjamin Schofield, 1994. Yes.
Yes. Counselor Whitfield?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Davila?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Fenton?
Yeah.
Yes. Counselor Curran?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Ramos?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Walsh?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Williams, absent. Counselor Allen?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Letterman?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Edwards?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Brown, absent. Counselor Hurst?
Yes. The grants are approved. Madam Clerk, will you please call the next item on the agenda?
The next item, item on the agenda is a memorandum of understanding for Valley Bike.
Is there anyone present to speak to this order?
Yes. Hi, it's
Name and address for the record.
Scott Hanson, 38 Texel Drive in Springfield. This is an update of the MOU that was approved by your body about two and a half years ago. Valley Bike received another grant from Mastat. And we are expanding the system. We will now have eight communities, adding East Hampton, Chicopee, and West Springfield in addition to the ones we originally started with. This is the beginning of the third year of Valley Bike. There is some uncertainty as to exactly when it's going to roll out due to concerns with COVID-19. Springfield, for its part, of Valley Bike, has 12 stations installed. We have two pending from the original 14, and we're going to be getting an additional four bike share stations. We're not sure if it's going to happen this year again because of the backlog between ordering equipment and COVID. So the reason, one of the updates in this MOU is that originally, the grant provided for resources to cover the administrative cost, of which North Hampton serves as the administrator and the liaison with the bike share company. Those funds dried up on December 31st. So now, on a per shitshare basis, each community has to contribute a small amount to help cover those administrative costs. So that's really one of the big changes in the MOU overall.
Thank you, Mr. Hanson. Counselor Letterman?
Thanks, Mr. Charlie Scott. Did you say we'd be anticipating four new stations in the city?
Yes, we currently have, we have 12 that were previously installed. We have two that were previously approved, but one was Pinchin Park, which, as you know, is under construction. The other one is at the Planning Commission site. And then we get four additional ones with this additional funding. Yes.
Do we know where those will be going?
We have not finalized them. Our thinking is we want to push up into Mason Square a little more. Currently, the easterly most station we have is at the Mason Square Library. So we were looking at, you know, possibly going to AIC and over to Springfield College for two out of the four. So, but they haven't finalized the locations.
All right. Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, Counselor Letterman. No other hands in the queue. Madam Clerk, this requires a roll. Call majority vote for passage. Can you please call the roll?
Unapproving the Valley Bike Share MOU. Counselor Gomez?
Douglas Greer, 2005. Yes.
Yes. Counselor Whitfield?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Davila?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Fenton? Counselor Fenton? Absent. Counselor Curran?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Ramos?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Walsh?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Williams, absent. Counselor Allen?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Letterman?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Edwards?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Brown, absent. Counselor Hurst?
Yes. So, order is approved. Madam Clerk, will you please call the next item on the agenda, please?
The next item on the agenda is an order authorizing the transfer, care, custody, management, and control of Northside Walnut Street.
Is there anyone present to speak to this item?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. President. Lindsay, Deputy Caffo, 80 Tamarack Drive in Springfield. This land transfer is for moving city-owned property over to the school department. This Walnut Street property is actually abutting Brookings Parking Lot, and the school committee has already voted to accept custody.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments from the council? Seeing none. Madam Clerk, this requires a two-thirds majority. Call for passage. Can you please call the roll?
Unapproving the, unapproving the order authorizing the transfer. Counselor Gomez?
Melvin Jones, 2009. Yes.
Melvin Jones, 2009. Yes. Counselor Whitfield?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Davila?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Fenton? Absent. Counselor Curran?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Ramos?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Walsh?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Williams, absent. Counselor Allen?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Letterman?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Edwards? Counselor Edwards?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Brown, absent. Counselor Hurst?
Yes. All those in favor suspending Rule 19 to take this order up in one vote? Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll on that?
On the suspension of Rule 19, Counselor Gomez?
Delano Walker, 2009. Yes.
Domino Walker, 2009. Yes. Counselor Whitfield?
His name is Delano Walker. Yes.
His name was Delano Walker. Yes. Counselor Davila?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Fenton?
Yeah.
Yes. Counselor Curran?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Ramos?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Walsh?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Williams, absent. Counselor Allen?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Letterman?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Edwards?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Brown, absent. Counselor Hurst?
Yes. The order is approved. Madam Clerk, will you please call the next item on the agenda?
The next item on the agenda is an order authorizing the transfer, care, custody, management, and control of Rear Union Street.
Is there anyone present to speak to this item?
Yes. Thank you. This is also a transfer of property over to the school department. It abuts DeBerry School, and the school committee adopted to accept custody as well.
Counselor Walsh?
Yes. Thank you. I was just curious, what are they going to do with the property? Is it for more parking, or what will be used for?
As far as the DeBerry property, I'm not sure yet. I actually reached out to Peter Garvey earlier, so he knew that this was coming, and he is aware. But I'm not sure how this property falls into construction site of the property right now.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions or comments from the council? Counselor Whitfield? Are there any other questions or comments from the council? Counsel Whitfield?
Should we know what the, what the property is going to be used for? I think that was a valid question. And Mr. Garvey knew?
No, I, he didn't tell me either way. It does abut the school, so I assume it's going to be used in the blueprint, but I don't know, you know, what is going to be on the land. I think it's probably just going to increase the footprint of the property.
Are the Brookings you're talking about?
DeBerry.
Oh, DeBerry. Oh, okay, so the building, the new school?
Right. The Brookings is part of the, is the parking lot right now.
Okay.
Thank you.
Questions or comments from the council? Saying none, this requires a two-thirds roll, call vote for passage. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
On approving the order authorizing the transfer of Rear Union Street, Counsel Gomez?
Tyree Golf, two thousand eleven, yes.
Yes, Counsel Whitfield?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Davila?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Fenton?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Curran?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Ramos?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Williams, absent. Counsel Allen?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Letterman?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Edwards?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Brown, absent. Counsel Hurst?
Yes, all those in favor of suspending Rule nineteen to take this order up in one vote? Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
On suspension of Rule nineteen, Counsel Gomez?
Wayne Edwards, two thousand thirteen, yes.
Wayne Edwards, two thousand thirteen, yes. Counsel Whitfield?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Davila?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Fenton?
Yeah.
Yes, Counsel Curran?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Ramos?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Williams, absent. Counsel Allen?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Letterman?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Edwards?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Brown, absent. Counsel Hurst?
Yes, the order is approved. Madam Clerk, can you please call the next item on the agenda?
The next item on the agenda is a budget transfer across departments in the amount of ninety thousand dollars.
Is there anyone present to speak to this item?
Yes, thank you. This is a request to transfer ninety thousand dollars from our reserve for contingency line over to the dispatch salary line. This is to fund some of the deficit that the department has run into with overtime. They had up to about twelve vacancies, fifteen throughout the year, twelve most recently, and they've just hired about six new dispatchers on. Obviously, to fill those shifts, they have to use overtime, which has run their department into a projected deficit, and this is to extinguish that deficit.
Thank you, Counsel Letterman, followed by Counsel Davila.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Lindsey, two questions. The first question is, do we have an understanding as to why they're facing that type of gap in their total number of employees? And secondly, how much is left in the reserve for contingency fund this new year?
Sure. So to answer the question about why that's happening, it's been an ongoing problem since I've been with the city. That department just always seemed to have a lot of turnover. And to get dispatchers up and trained, we were following a state-run training program, which meant we weren't able to hire as soon as we wanted to. We kind of had to wait until the state ran this program. We've since brought a lot of that training in-house, so now we don't have to wait for the state to run the training program. But we haven't really been able to lessen the turnover in that department. I know that it is an industry-wide problem as far as turnover for emergency dispatching. So what we do to try to combat that a little bit is we allow them to hire and train more than their complement. And that way, we try to do that by combating when we know we are going to have people leave, we already have people to backfill. They also keep a list, they do interviews, they keep a waitlist of people that they know they've already interviewed, and they're kind of like on a list to be able to call if we do have a vacancy come up, to call back as soon as possible. So those are some ways we try to make the hiring process faster for them. But we still really haven't gotten to determining a solution for the turnover in the department, ongoing turnover.
And how much is left in the reserve for contingency fund?
Let me check that for you. I don't have it handy. Pat Burns, do you have that number?
Yes, it's a hundred and sixteen thousand will be remaining after this transfer.
Thanks, Pat.
Just one more question, Mr. Chairman, related to this item. Do we know, when, when folks are leaving, do we know where they're going? Are they going to other dispatch departments, or are they leaving the industry?
Is that question for me?
If you know, if you happen to know.
Um, I don't have that answer for you, but we have kind of, well, not kind of. We've tried to implement a exit interview process specifically within that department to try to find some of that stuff out. Talia G. and some of the HR staff have been working towards getting that done. I don't know if they've started or not yet, but I know that that was an idea.
Okay, thank you. You muted, Mr.?
Thank you, Counsel Fenton, Counsel, I mean, thank you, Counsel Letterman, Counsel Davila.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening, Lindsey. So you said that there were twelve vacancies. You said we hired some of them back. So how many of those twelve vacancies remain vacant right now?
Let me see, I can get that for you. We hired, well, seven people started yesterday, so right now we have four vacant call-taker positions.
Okay, so we have four vacant dispatch positions?
Yep.
Now, is the increase, is this transferred due to the vacancies or an increase of the call volume as well?
No, this is due to using overtime to backfill to cover vacant shifts. So we haven't, it's not due to adding more callers on the floor at one time, which you might see if you get an increase in call volume. It's keeping the same level of staffing on a shift. But because we just don't have as many people as we need to cover all those shifts, we need to backfill them overtime.
Okay. Now, in relationship to the seven people that we hired, with the new spending, hiring freeze, was that before the executive order went into effect on the hiring freeze, or is this exempt from the order?
So the hiring of these folks was in process when the hiring freeze started, but yes, this was exempt. Some of the hiring, public safety hiring, we still move forward outside of the freeze.
So there's no impediment to continue to actively hire four, the four remaining open dispatch positions?
If they have the opportunity to, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Davila. Seeing no further questions in the queue?
Counsel Hurst, President Hurst?
I'm sorry, Counsel Allen and Counsel Fenton, you'll just have to speak up.
Yeah, I, I don't know how to indicate it other than to just speak, so thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Lindsey, I know we have a staff freeze and a hiring freeze, or a spending freeze and a hiring freeze. Under what circumstances would more people be hired in this area or any area right now? What would happen if there was an extreme staffing need? What happens at this stage?
As far as hiring more dispatchers?
No, more, more, more anybody. You know, just if we have a staffing freeze, the hiring freeze, excuse me, a hiring freeze, is there a process? That doesn't mean there's not going to be needs to hire people, and what, what is put in place to review any needs that come up? I know we're trying not to hire anybody, but could you just explain the process if something were to come up?
Sure. So right now, if emergencies do come up, it's the same process as it always was, and it still goes to PRC. And anything is reviewed by the mayor. If we decide that, you know, the hiring, we need to exempt something from the hiring freeze, we do that. So there's a process definitely in place for that.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Fenton. If there are no further questions, Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll? This requires a two-thirds vote for passage.
On approving the order for the budget transfer across departments, Counsel Gomez?
Tyree Tyndall, two thousand fifteen, yes.
Tyree Tyndall, two thousand fifteen, yes. Counsel Whitfield?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Davila?
Sorry, I was muted, yes.
Yes, Counsel Fenton?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Curran?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Ramos?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Williams, absent. Counsel Allen?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Letterman?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Edwards?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Brown, absent. Counsel Hurst?
Yes. All those in favor of suspending Rule nineteen to take this order up in one vote? Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
On suspending Rule nineteen, Counsel Gomez?
Alberto Burnell, two thousand fifteen, yes.
Yes, Counsel Whitfield?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Davila?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Fenton?
Yeah.
Yes, Counsel Curran?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Ramos?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Williams, absent. Counsel Allen?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Letterman?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Edwards?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Brown, absent. Counsel Hurst?
Yes, the order is approved. Madam Clerk, can you please call the next item on the agenda?
The next item on the agenda is a five-year lease for the IT department.
Is there anyone present to see this item?
Yep, Andy Doty, seventy-four Pinecrest Drive. Five years ago, we stood before the city council. We worked closely with finance to come up with a strategy by which we could keep our technology up-to-date, secure, and, you know, improve performance and offer more services. This is beneficial in and of that. It doesn't cause a speed bump in requests for money. It's something that's easily budgeted. It's, there's no surprises involved. With this, we also forecast expansion over the five years. So it allows us to kind of sit down and look at the technology, utilize the latest technology, leverage additional space requirements that, you know, pop up during the year for new softwares that are required. So what this is, is basically the next iteration of the five years. With a newer sand, we're running out of space on the one. We did a reasonable forecast, but unfortunately, the amount of data that we've stored has grown, you know, exponentially. So this new one will take into consideration that growth and growth over the five years.
Thank you, Andy. And before we take questions or comments from the council, Andy, I just want to say thank you for everything that you've done in light of COVID-nineteen. Clearly, everything, or just about everything, has had to be done remotely. I know you and your department have gone above and beyond and have worked overtime, I'm sure, to make sure things transition smoothly. So we appreciate it on the city council, and I appreciate you leading the entire city from a technology standpoint during these difficult times. So thank you, Counsel Davila. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. I also want to join you, sir, in complimenting the IT department for the excellent job that they have done during this crisis, and for allowing for local government to continue to function effectively. So kudos to you guys, excellent job. On the matter, just have a quick question if I may, Andy. Where are you guys going to expand to, if you could say?
So the, the, the storage platform that we have is divided up across our two data centers. So for instance, we have a data center here, and we have a data center at the Tapley location. This, this new sand will sit on both sides. And for redundancy and resiliency, we actually make copies of the data on both sides. So for instance, if we should have to shut down City Hall for a particular reason, we can shift over to the other site. So this is actually not one system, it's two systems that work hand-in-hand with one another to back each other up, so that we can keep, you know, we can keep the, the technology flowing.
Okay, so this is just for the five-year, five-year lease will be much more cost-effective as opposed to a three-year lease?
Correct, correct.
Very well. If I may, you mentioned about expanding. And I think you mentioned about expanding the amount of data that we're going to be storing in the future?
Yes, so, you know, we, we, we have a particular, you know, law that we have to obligate relative to FOIA requests and public information. So a lot of the stuff that we accrue over the years have to be saved. And that includes emails, that includes files. You know, then of course, we have the day-to-day operations, we have copies of POs, we have copies of requisitions and contracts and everything else. All this adds up over a period of time.
Right.
So what we do is we forecast what that level of expansion is going to be. We try to hit a sweet spot where we don't spend too much money and buy space we don't need, but we also try to not, you know, spend, you know, not underestimate what it is that we're going to be required to store over the period of time.
Right. And my last question, if I may, this new expansion, will that require more manpower? Or can we handle with existing personnel?
No, so everything, when we, when we engage a vendor, we try to have the vendor come in and work with our team, but this is a light lift. But as a rule, the vendor, you know, does all the implementation, setup, configuration, and hands us the keys when they're complete, so
Excellent.
Focus on our day-to-day responsibilities.
Thank you, Andy. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counsel Davila. If there are no further questions, Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
On the order approving the five-year contract, Counsel Gomez?
Jerry Bilham, two thousand seventeen, yes.
Jerry Bilham, two thousand seventeen, yes. Counsel Whitfield?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Davila?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Fenton?
Yeah.
Yes, Counsel Curran?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Ramos?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Williams, absent. Counsel Allen?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Letterman? Yes, Counsel Edwards?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Brown, absent. Counsel Hurst?
Yes, the order is approved. Madam Clerk, will you please call the next item on the agenda?
The next item on the agenda is a resolution about, I'm sorry, about the twenty-twenty census.
Is there anyone present to speak to this item?
Yes, Mr. President, thank you. So a few weeks ago, back on May fifth, Counsel Gomez and I met with several panel of community activists and a representative of the census to talk about the, the process where we are and sort of the struggles that the census has had this year due to the lack of funding at the federal level compared to years past. We are all well aware of this situation and of this issue because we met on May twenty-first with our own election commissioner who told us exactly the same thing, which is that census, you know, has been a has been a concern and has, has been an issue because of the lack of funding at the federal level and the lack of support. So Counsel Gomez and I, we were discussing it, and we wanted to do something to remind people of the importance of filling out their census and encourage people to fill out the census, because there are many benefits to to filling out the census, and there are many pitfalls to not accurately counting people. So we decided to put together this resolution in collaboration with some folks that that are really trying very hard to have everyone counted. So I'm going to read the resolution into the, into the record, and then I'll let anyone ask you questions or comments. So here we have a So here we have a 2020 census resolution in the city of Springfield, June 1st, 2020. Whereas the U.S. Census Bureau is requiring by the required by the U.S. Constitution to conduct a count of the population every 10 years. And this count provides a historic opportunity to help shape the foundation of our society and play an active role in American democracy. And whereas the city of Springfield is committed to ensuring every resident is counted. And whereas the city of Springfield includes many hard-to-count communities, which are those that face barriers to full and equitable representation in the data collection process and that traditionally have been undercounted. And whereas census data plays an important role in the allocation of federal and state funding to state and local communities. And whereas census data helps determine how many seats each state will have in the U.S. House of Representatives and is necessary for an accurate and fair redistricting of state legislative seats, county and city councils, and voting districts. And whereas information from the 2020 census and American Community Survey are vital tools for economic development and increased employment. And whereas the information collected by census is confidential and protected by law. And whereas a united voice from business, government, community-based and faith-based organizations, educators, media, and others will enable the 2020 census message to reach more of our residents. Now therefore be a resolve that the Springfield City Council and the city of Springfield is committed to partnering with the U.S. Census Bureau and Commonwealth of Massachusetts to achieve a complete and accurate count of all persons within our borders, to support the goals and ideas for the 2020 census, and will disseminate 2020 census information, three encourages all residents to fill out the 2020 census, four encourages all residents to participate in events and initiatives that will raise the overall awareness of the 2020 census. And whereas we encourage supports the partnership specialists, census takers, and U.S. Census Bureau staff as they help our community complete an accurate count. Mr. President, we mentioned, we've been mentioned, and we emphasize this in every meeting, that we were, because of the COVID crisis, we're only taking up issues that are of immediate importance and that are of priority. The 2020 census meets both criteria. It is very important for everyone in the city of Springfield to be counted. And it is a high priority for us as municipal legislators. Our community benefits the most when everyone responds to the 2020 census. And we help our community because we help our community get a fair share of federal funds, which go towards schools, hospitals, roads, public works, and other vital programs that we benefit from here in the city and everywhere else. And so we want to make sure that everyone is counted. And we want to make sure that everyone is aware that we are under a deadline and that there are several different ways for people to fill out their census. And so anyone, we want to encourage all of our residents to fill out their census and be counted. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Ramos. Counselor Gomez.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to thank Counselor Orlando Ramos. Okay, sorry about that. Just hear a little back overcast. I just want to thank Counselor Orlando Ramos for reading that into the record. Him and I, like he stated, met with a
The counselor's Bluetooth device is connected successfully. Microphones on you, please. If you are not speaking, it would greatly appreciate it.
No problem. So I just wanted to state that this is, aside from keeping our residents safe and from other resolutions that we are going to be listening to tonight and also that we've heard from our last meeting, this is one of imminent importance that we, as counselors, need to come together. I know we had a really great meeting with our commissioner, Gladys Oyola. And it was very receptive that all the colleagues and all of our all of our elected body was in the same accord that the census is by far one of the most important important things that we have to advocate for in this time of crisis. Outside of, you know, the other things that we are fighting for, we have to make sure that everyone that lives in the city of Springfield is counted. We need to, ward counselors, try to work with neighborhood boards. And like we stated, that there was other organizations within the city, like the libraries, that received some funding to expand the conversation outside of just the library to be able to market that how important the census is. And obviously, with this diverse background that Springfield, the city of Springfield has, I was proud to be able to co-sponsor this with my colleague Orlando Ramos, but also stand side-by-side, once again, with the entire City Council and really advocating for the seriousness of this. Springfield outside of other communities is not reporting at a rate that it's very, we're at a point that it's very dangerous. We're showing significant and dangerous numbers of not reporting. And I know that us being in this new normal, that what people call it or are calling it, is that we just wanted to stand in solidarity with this resolution and for the rest of the City Council, for all of us to push forward and to make sure we're doing everything that we can as counselors. And how do we support our elections office and also the community to make sure that if they cannot mail it in, but they can, are able to work with other social justice groups that receive funding and working cohesively to make sure by October 31st, or if the day has been extended. We know that historically, this census was underfunded by the federal administration as of a year ago. So we knew we were going to be at this point in time. 10 years ago, the state of Massachusetts lost a congressional seat, respectively Congressman John Olver. Thank you for his service. But moving forward, we're the closest elected body to the residents of Springfield. And I think it was important for us to put this into, for us to read this and be able to show the city of Springfield that we need everybody counted and we need everybody's help to make sure that they're counted as well. Thank you for the opportunity to put this forward, Mr. President. And I yield to the rest of my colleagues. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Gomez. Counselor Davila?
Thank you, Mr. President. My compliments to Counselor Gomez and Counselor Ramos for putting forward this resolution. We all know that if we take a look at the city of Springfield, the city has, the population has really increased. It is my understanding, the last census, we officially had 153,000 or some change souls in the city of Springfield. We all know that it number has drastically increased. Now with the coronavirus on top of us, with this pandemic, with the financial impacts that move upon us, it is critical that everybody gets counted so that we don't miss out in any federal allocation because we're going to have some serious difficulties otherwise. And so I'm proud to join this resolution and will be supporting this resolution. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor Davila. Seeing no other hands in the queue, we will move to a vote on this resolve. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Counselor, I don't believe you guys have to vote on a resolve.
Madam Clerk, will you please call the next item on the agenda?
The next item on the agenda is a resolution regarding
Point of order, we do have to vote on a result. Even if it's a voice vote. I apologize.
No, it's fine. That's my fault.
Typically, we do do voice votes. Attorney Davis? Imagine now that we
Yes. On accepting the resolution for the 2020 census, Counselor Gomez?
Jackie Ligon, Joselle Ligon, 2015, Nathan Bills, yes.
Yes. Counselor Whitfield? Counselor Whitfield?
I say, oh, yes.
Yes. Counselor Davila?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Fenton?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Curran?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Ramos?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Walsh?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Williams, absent. Counselor Allen?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Letterman?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Edwards?
Yes.
Okay. Yes. Counselor Brown, absent. Counselor Hirsch?
Yes. The resolve is approved. Madam Clerk, will you please call the next item on the agenda?
The next item on the agenda is a resolution regarding the water and sewer commission rate increase.
Is there anyone present to speak to this resolve?
Oh, yes, Mr. President.
Counselor Davila?
Thank you, Mr. President. I initiated this resolution. I felt that it was very important that the City Council as a body spoke on the proposed water and sewer bill rate increase that was suggested by the Sewer and Water Commission of 16.9%. This suggestion was made a couple of months ago. I am also pleased, Mr. President, to report to you and to the body that since 4 o'clock today, after this resolution was submitted, that the Springfield Water and Sewer Commission has reconsidered and is now proposing a rate hike of 9.5 as opposed to 16.9%. The conditions remain the same as to why they are doing this rate hike. That is because of the malfunction in the Copper Mountain and the coronavirus to a degree. We had, according to what the Water and Sewer Commission had established, they had some really decrease in water supply in the month of April or May. Since then, they have looked at the new data and apparently the impact hasn't been as awful and as bad as we thought it would be. With that being said, Mr. President, I do feel, however, that as we have been informed in the past, that the City Council, that the city as a whole, has very challenging years ahead of us. We have a challenging fiscal year for 2021, '22, and possibly '23. With that, I still do believe that the City Council should be in the record on this and that we go forward with this resolution calling for the assistance to minimize the, any potential rate increases. So if I may, Mr. President, with the resolution as it stands, and then I will open it up to the body. Whereas where the Springfield Water and Sewer Commission was established in 1996 and is independent public regional utility and where the Springfield Water and Sewer Commission is to provide mission, is to provide high-quality water to the residents in Springfield. And whereas the Springfield Water and Sewer Commission serves 250,000 customers in the Panera Valley. And whereas the Springfield Water and Sewer Commission also provides high-quality water to Springfield, Lot Lot, wholesale drinking water to Agro-Mall Meadow and Ussle Meadow, an emergency wastewater service to Westwood, Southwick, West Springfield, Chicopee, and Wolverhampton. And whereas the Springfield Water and Sewer Commission Capital Improvement Plan was affected by the failure of a critical valve and pipeline connecting Copper Mountain Reservoir to the West Parish Filters Water Treatment Plant. And whereas the Springfield Water and Sewer Commission Capital Improvement Plan was further affected by a 15% to 20% of water use decrease due to the COVID-19 pandemic. And whereas the Springfield Water and Sewer Commission is proposing a 16.9% water and sewer rate increase for the residents of Springfield. And whereas the average water and sewer bill increase is $140.88 per year starting August 2020. And whereas Springfield residents have been financially impacted by the COVID-19 pandemic, now therefore be resolved that the Springfield City Council calls on federal and state officials, state agencies, and the mayor's administration to provide financial support to the Springfield Water and Sewer Commission to minimize any potential water and sewer bill increase and to aid in the recovery from the economic impact being experienced from the COVID-19 pandemic. That is the resolution, Mr. President. In lieu of the new changes, if the council feels there's room to amend it to reflect the changes, I will be amicable to any changes.
Thank you, Counselor Davila. Counselor Letterman, followed by Counselor Ramos.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to say thank you to our colleague, Counselor Davila, for taking the lead in sponsoring this resolution and for inviting myself and other colleagues to co-sponsor. I know many counselors have been very outspoken regarding the proposed increase by the Water and Sewer Commission. And I know many have also been looking for solutions and opportunities to provide partnership and support to the Water and Sewer Commission. I know especially Counselor Curran and Counselor Gomez were very early on speaking out. And so I think we all have the same goal here. We recognize that the proposal that came from the Water and Sewer Commission, while certainly not malicious in any way, posed and continues to pose a serious challenge for all of our constituents. And I just wanted to highlight a couple of pieces that, you know, came out during our hearing with them, for folks that might be watching, which is really that, you know, water and sewer infrastructure, while critical, extremely critical to our day-to-day lives and health and safety and well-being in the city of Springfield, has really been largely abandoned by state and federal representatives. There's been very little funding made available to local water and sewer commissions like the, and water departments, not just here in Springfield, but across the country, such as the Springfield Water and Sewer Commission. And one of the things that was pointed out by their executive director is that when the Water and Sewer Commission was put into place and the infrastructure was built, it was 90% funded by the federal government. But now the Water and Sewer Commission is being forced to essentially try to address decades of deferred maintenance and being able to do that solely with the revenue they raise from the ratepayers. And so we've heard a lot of comparisons and concerns relative to the type of breakdown that water departments have seen in other parts of this country, such as in Flint, Michigan. If you actually look at what caused the breakdown there, it was really due to horrible management and really bad decisions that were made trying to save money and not really address the situation at hand. And so while we certainly are glad that the Water and Sewer Commission is revisiting their rate hike, once we do get through this and hopefully arrive at a fair rate for the people of the city of Springfield, we also need to continue to move forward in impressing our state and federal delegation, not only for the revenue that's needed to make up for lost revenue as a result of COVID, but also for the infrastructure funds that are necessary to continue delivering safe drinking water to the people of Springfield. So I hope that that is something we can all continue to work together on and hold the, especially the federal government accountable. Because if it's an issue elsewhere, it will become an issue here. And if we want to see fair water rates all around, we're going to need that financial support.
Thank you, Counselor Letterman. Counselor Walsh, followed by Counselor Ramos and Gomez.
Thank you, Mr. President. And thank you, Counselor Davila, for doing this. This is certainly an issue that impacts all of our constituents and all of us. And I think that the fact that we have held the committee of the whole meeting and have a resolve is important for our constituents to know that we're concerned about the things that impact them. So I'm very happy you've brought this forward, and I would like to be added as a co-sponsor.
Thank you, Counselor Walsh. Counselor Ramos, followed by Counselor Gomez.
Mr. President, thank you. You know, this is an issue that we've all, most of us have, I think the entire body has spoken against. We held a meeting with the Springfield Water and Sewer Commission a few, a couple of weeks ago. And we all expressed our concerns to Springfield Water and Sewer Commission and their executive director about this proposed increase. We all spoken on behalf of our constituents, who right now cannot afford any sort of rate increase when it comes to utilities. Many people are unemployed. Many businesses have been closed and have not been able to recoup any revenue at all. And so it isn't the time to be discussing any sort of increase from any utility company. I support the spirit of this resolution. However, I do have an issue with the wording of it. As I'm looking at it, one of the things that I'm primarily concerned about is that at the end...
uh, it does say that, uh, um, the Springfield City Council calls on federal, state, elected officials and mayor's administration to provide financial support, um, to Springfield Water and Sewer Commission. I don't necessarily think that is the, uh, city of Springfield's responsibility to provide any funding, any, um, financial funding for the Springfield Water and Sewer Commission. They are a separate entity. We are certainly in no position to be bailing out a utility company. We would not do this for EverSource or Columbia Gas. Uh, and so I do have an issue with that wording. And so I would ask the sponsor to consider removing, um, the city of Springfield from that. I think it will be appropriate for the federal government to provide funding to Springfield Water and Sewer Commission. I think it will be entirely appropriate for the state to provide for, uh, funding for the Springfield Water and Sewer Commission. I don't think it will be feasible and/or appropriate for the city of Springfield to do so. Um, again, we wouldn't do that for EverSource or Columbia Gas. And so I would not encourage the city of Springfield to, um, because of the, the constraints that we have currently and the, the, the challenges that we currently have. We have a hiring freeze, we have a spending freeze, um, and we are looking into a recession. We've been told that from our financial team over and over. And, uh, we have to try to be fiscally responsible. Um, there are other things that the Springfield Water and Sewer Commission can do to save money. Um, and I'm, I'm not certain that they've explored all of their options. So, uh, I, I don't at this point, um, uh, support the city of Springfield providing any service, any, any financial support, um, to Springfield, to, to any utility company.
Thank you, uh, Counselor Ramos, Counselor Gomez, followed by Counselor Letterman. All right, I'm sorry. Gomez, follow by Counselor Letterman.
All right, so, um, I just want to say, uh, uh, thank you to, uh, Counselor Davila, uh, for, uh, putting this resolution together, um, for, uh, including, uh, me in the conversation on illustrating, you know, some kind of a consensus on what are the asks and what are the things that we want to urge our elected officials. And essentially, I remember, um, when I first became a part of this council, that when, um, Counselor, Counselor Walsh and at the time Counselor, uh, Bud Williams, uh, and myself were on the committee that, uh, would have had these conversations. And there was a major pipers in the middle of downtown that really slowed things down and, and we knew then, we knew then that, that Springfield had a crumbling infrastructure, pipes that were almost a hundred years old and there was plans and big meetings and, and things of that, uh, of that in that, uh, arena that we were trying to figure out how and what we could do as one of the elected officials and putting the faith in, uh, Springfield Water and Sewer. And, and now, at, at, at a moment's notice where we're at, when there is stimulus money coming through. And I want to, you know, thank, uh, the congressman for getting PBTA that trans, tran, transportation money. But I also want to, the reason why I asked to add the federal, uh, entity onto this resolution is because now we need the federal, uh, government to step up and really, uh, get us some of this infrastructure, uh, money too as well. Cause not only in the city of Springfield, but around the country, there's crumbling infrastructure that is creating, uh, uh, bad water. Well, we, we've, for years, uh, there's so many issues that have been happening, but still Flint doesn't have clean water. Right here in the city of Springfield, we are blessed. And I've always grew up knowing that I can drink water on, out of the faucet without a problem. And I know over the past three years, it has been some issues with, uh, the, the high rates, uh, uh, of, uh, of, uh, a substance that's within our water, but it's safe for us to drink. And I know that, uh, that, uh, the Water and Sewer Administration is doing what they can to make sure that that water from Cabo Mountain gets to the city of Springfield and to our regional, um, our regional towns. But I think we're at a moment in time where, um, Springfield being, uh, the capital of Western Massachusetts and having the, this infrastructure in the, in, in the state that it's in, uh, from Ludlow all the way to the, to Cabo Mountain where these, uh, uh, these issues had, had incurred, that we need our state delegation and are also our federal delegation to step in. Um, these constituents are theirs too, not only ours. Um, moving forward, I just think that this is the, uh, uh, a, a resolution that speaks to that we are fighting for the little guys, the people that lived on fixed income. And one, I want to commend the Sewer, uh, Sewer Department and the Water and Sewer Department for their increase and, and giving veterans and elderly and, and cutting them, uh, a break. But essentially moving forward, you know, um, standing up during a, a time like this, regardless is always the right time. So with that being said, thank you, Mr. President. And I also wanted to give my thanks before the meeting's over and, and, and extend, uh, a, a, a virtual hug to, uh, my brother from across the, the aisle, um, Tim Allen, for his words earlier. Uh, um, they, they, they pierced me deeply and I'm very, uh, very appreciative of, of your moment of silence. And thank you, Counselor Allen, for that.
Thank you, Counselor Gomez, uh, Counselor Letterman, followed by Counselor Davila.
Uh, thanks, Mr. Chairman. I, I just wanted to, um, uh, point out one, one thing relative to the Springfield Water and Sewer Commission, which is that i- in comparison to other utilities, the Springfield Water and Sewer Commission is, is still a quasi-public entity, uh, whereas utilities like EverSource and Columbia Gas are, are still regulated utilities, but they're shareholder owned. So they actually return profits to their shareholders and I would certainly agree uh, that I would not be i- interested in bailing them out, um, in this type of a scenario, uh, nor am I interested in, in a full-on bailout of the, the Water and Sewer Commission. Um, I am not, however, completely against if there was a, a fiscally responsible way to support, uh, certain infrastructure improvements that need to be made to the water and sewer infrastructure in the city of Springfield in, you know, conversation with the CAFO and, and the mayor's administration. I wouldn't be completely against that. And so I don't know that, that I, I would necessarily characterize it, um, as a bailout. I think that we've, we've given money as a city, uh, to similar institutions such as the PBTA in the past. Um, I believe in our last budget, there was a, a line item for contributions towards the, the Transit Authority, which is sort of very similar, uh, to the Water and Sewer Commission in that it's not returning a profit to anybody. It's essentially hiring employees and carrying out a, a, a service. Um, so I don't think that the answer is for the city of Springfield certainly to cover the entire cost or necessarily to contribute any funds. But I think as we look at how we can work together at different levels of government, um, I, I, I think that that is the spirit in which Counselor Davila authored the, the resolution. But that was my only thought on it. I certainly understand, uh, the, my, uh, colleagues' viewpoint and, and certainly will leave it to Counselor Davila to decide on, on how he'd like to move forward with it.
Uh, so Counselor Davila, before we get to you, Madam Clerk, can you please acknowledge Counselor, uh, Brown as being present?
Counselor Brown?
Yes, present.
Present.
Counselor Davila, followed by Counselor Brown, who I see has, has his hand up as well.
All right, we'll yield to, uh, Counselor Brown, Mr. President.
Thank you. Counselor Brown?
Yes, I do apologize, uh, Counselor Pre, uh, Mr. President Hurst. Um, it's kind of difficult. Um, I, I, I do want it to go for the record as far as when it comes to, um, recording what our constituents need and want on this video, video le- level. Um, me myself was taken out of context because of a power outage, which I spoke to you. So it's kind of difficult with this social media thing. Um, and I do appreciate the hard work that you've been doing. You've been doing a great job. I do want to commend you for it. Um, when it comes to, uh, Counselor Davila, a lot, when it comes to a lot of us, we have a lot of concerns. I think it's the quality to me, um, of, um, they're, they're, uh, uh, of this equality of service in my mind. I'm just curious, as far as the testing, I don't know, you say water and sewer. Does that do with testing of the water? I don't, I don't know. Is that what it, does that what it consists of?
Uh, I will defer to Counselor Davila or any other counselor who might be able to assist in answering, uh, Counselor Brown's question.
Because, well, I, what, what, you know, the reason I ask, and it's just, you know, really, like, it, it really doesn't need to be. And so I'm just, what, what, what it is is though, right now, we're at a point where I have to go to Walmart and filter my water. That's not impressive to me. I don't want to get like Boston. So I know Counselor Davila, his, his, that's what his charge is. We want to make sure if they want to raise, you know, the, the pricing, whatever they want to do, they can do it. But our quality of water isn't that great. That's me, what me and Counselor Davila has been speaking of, you know, as far as when we speak. I want to know, is there some way we can test it? Because I don't even feel comfortable about, and I know you don't, President Hurst, I know you don't, where we can pour the water out of our water system and give it to our kids without it being filtered and drink it. So I commend my colleague, Counselor Davila, and I'm just wondering, is those things, are we speaking of that also? And I, and I yield to my, to, to my colleague and I commend him for his fight. Cause I'm wondering, I can't have my kids even drink the water right now.
Well, well taken, Counselor Brown. Counselor Davila?
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, just to, uh, uh, address Counselor Brown's, uh, point, uh, it is my understanding, um, and, uh, that the, the entire water and sewer rate includes the whole package, uh, that includes, um, salaries, that includes infrastructure, includes testing, includes everything. Uh, as of the quality of the water itself, uh, that's a concern that I have heard in the past.
Yeah.
And, uh, some residents have indeed said that to me. Uh, we, uh, conversations that I have had with the Water and Sewer Commission, uh, they reassure me that the water is safe to drink. Uh, is there room for improvement? Of course. Uh, and I know we can do better. We have had, the water and sewer system, uh, is a resource, a natural resource that the city, uh, owns for at least a hundred and fifteen years. Uh, and so, um, we, this is a system that if we don't pay attention to, uh, to kind of allow, to what Counselor Letterman was saying a little while ago, we don't start paying attention to it more. Uh, if we don't work with the Water and Sewer Commission, as Commissioner, Chairwoman Vanessa Altero stated during our meeting, uh, they need help. Uh, and they can't let the colony forgot and child. So the spirit of this resolution is to call attention to all levels, uh, federal, state, local administration, uh, that we really need to pay attention to this, uh, not only because it's a critical infrastructure, but also that in the times that we live on, under the pandemic, uh, it's not right to raise prices. Uh, it's not right during this time to waste anything, let alone the price of water. So with that being said, uh, I will, if I may, Mr. President, and, uh, um, if appropriate, uh, I would be more than welcome, uh, to include some of the amendments that, uh, Counselor Ramos said. And I also do have, uh, an amendment if I could introduce, uh, but I will take your lead on how to do that, Mr. President.
We'll, we'll take your amendments, uh, we'll take your amendments thoroughly, um.
Thank you, Mr. President.
So did you, did you want to make a motion to amend?
Yes, if I may, if I could, uh, just to, um, reflect again, cause when I wrote, when this resolution was written, oh, by the way, if I may, uh, I also want to take this opportunity to thank, uh, Counselor Gomez, Counsel Letterman, Counsel Fenton, and now Counsel Walsh for, uh, stepping up and, uh, co-sponsoring this, uh, resolution. Thank you for, for your leadership on, uh, on that. Uh, so I would like to amend if I may, Mr. President, uh, one, where it says, um, whereas the Springfield Water and Sewer Commission was proposing a sixteen point nine water and sewer rate increase, I would like to change that six point nine percent to reflect the latest change, uh, as, as announced by the Water and Sewer Commission to say nine point five percent.
So there's a motion on the floor. Um, is there?
Second.
There's a seconded by Counselor Gomez. Uh, all those in favor of the motion? Um, Madam Clerk, can you please call the, the discussion on the motion, Counsel Brown?
On the motion to amend, Counselor Gomez?
Madam Clerk, Counselor Brown?
No, 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 Mr. President. I just wanted to, um, be added as a co-sponsor in support of, uh, Counselor Davila. I don't know when I should do it, but I, I would like to, uh, add, be added as a co-sponsor also.
Thank you, uh, Madam Clerk. Once it is amended, amended in full, can you add Counselor Brown as a co-sponsor, uh, on the First Amendment? Madam Clerk?
On the First Amendment? Counselor Gomez?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Whitfield?
I actually asked to be added via email as a co-sponsor, so I don't know when is the right time, but, thank you, yeah.
That's fine, that's fine, Counselor Whitfield. I'll add you as a sponsor.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Yes, Counselor Davila?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Fenton?
Yeah.
Yes, Counselor Curran?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Ramos?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Williams, absent, Counselor Allen? Absent, Counselor Letterman?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Edwards?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Brown?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Hurst?
Yes, amendment is approved. Uh, Counselor Davila, did you have another amendment, sir?
Uh, yes, sir. Uh, I have the other amendment of where it says, uh, the average water and sewer bill increase is a hundred and forty, uh, dollars and eighty-eight cents. I would like that to reflect the new proposed change as of four o'clock today by the Water and Sewer Commission to reflect to say one hundred and six and thirty-two cents per year.
But there are no objections, then what we'll do is we'll take all of Counselor Davila's amendments together and have, uh, roll forward on those amendments.
Uh, that, that is my amendment. I, I am welcome to listen to Counselor Ramos's suggestion or amendment proposal that he had before.
Okay, so, so I'm sorry. Counselor Ramos has one that will make it, uh, that he can make it at that time, so.
Uh, second.
So there's the, uh, amendment made by Counselor Davila, seconded by Counselor Gomez, Madam.
On accepting the motion to amend, Counselor Gomez?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Whitfield?
Yes, can someone please mute their phone?
Yes, Counselor Davila?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Fenton?
Yeah.
Yes, Counselor Curran?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Ramos?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Williams, absent, Counselor Allen? Absent, Counselor Letterman? Counselor Letterman?
Yes.
Sorry, I was, uh, this is Counselor Allen. I didn't know I was muted. Sorry. I voted yes.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Letterman?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Edwards?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Brown?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Hurst?
Yes, uh, Counselor Ramos, did you have an amendment that you wanted to make, sir?
Uh, I do, Mr. President, thank you. So, um, you know, as I, as I started off saying, uh, you know, I support the spirit of this, uh, resolution. I know that we all have the same goal in, in mind, which is to make sure that we do everything in our power to, um, to voice our residents' concerns and, uh, prevent and, and, um, uh, unnecessary increase in, in the rate and the water sewer rate. So, um, you know, in the spirit of compromise and because I'm, I, I do support this, the spirit of this, um, and I respect what, um, Counsel Letterman mentioned earlier in terms of the possibility of the city of Springfield sort of contributing towards a project, a Springfield Water and Sewer project. Um, yes, I would absolutely support something like that. I don't necessarily support the city of Springfield writing a check to the Springfield Water and Sewer Commission, but we absolutely should, um, look into whether or not we can help, uh, with specific projects, um, related to water and sewer. So in the spirit of compromise and with that in mind, I think the best. So, in the spirit of compromise, and with that in mind, I think the best way to do this without overcomplicating anything would be to amend the section where, now therefore be resolved, the Springfield City Council calls on federal government and state elected officials, state agencies, the mayor's administration to, the section where it says, provide financial support shall be replaced with the words "work with", the mayor's administration to work with the Springfield Water and Sewer Commission to minimize any potential water and sewer bill increase. And that way, you know, I think that we're getting the same message across, without explicitly saying that the city of Springfield should cut a check to the Springfield Water and Sewer Commission. So that's my motion. I hope that my colleagues will support it, and if so, then I would absolutely support this 100%, and I would love to be added as a sponsor. To be honest with you, I would prefer that the Springfield Water and Sewer Commission put in a rate freeze, but this is what we have in front of us, and so that's my motion, and I hope that you all support it.
There's a motion on the floor to amend this resolve made by Counsel Ramos. I believe it was seconded by Counsel Edwards. Is there any discussion on the motion? I saw Malo Yahan was raised in the queue, followed by Counsel Davila. I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mr. President. My main thing, and I know where I come from, the main, main, main thing is the quality. Can I pour the water, because I've traveled different places, can I pour that water out of that sink and give it to my children? See, there are certain people I know who worry about that. I know Counsel Whitfield, she not giving nothing, Letterman, you, Mr. Hearst, I know some of my colleagues, I know how we are. So if they want to sit there and raise the price, I don't care about that. It seems like the quality of our water is scary to me. I'm going to support everything you guys do, because I believe in you guys. I just want to know, is there something we can do as far as our quality? Because it seems like it's dropping to me. You know, I don't know, I don't know. I know, you know, you guys, I refer to, you know, I know Counsel Whitfield, she's one of, she's one of my mentors, she's teaching me. You know, Counselor Hearst, you guys are teaching me, I'm a rookie, Counselor Gomez, you guys are teaching me. But I just don't understand, this water that we drink is getting worse, and they're talking about what? Is there anything I can do? What can we do about this water quality? Because I can promise you, if we test it, it's not impressive.
I think we can continue to have the conversation, Counselor Brown, and I think that will probably be most helpful. And so I certainly will be committed to doing that. I'm not sure with this, sir. Counselor Davila on the motion, followed by Counsel Letterman?
Thank you, Mr. President, just to say that I have no objections with Counsel Ramos's amendment, I'm open to it. And just to echo briefly what Counselor Brown was mentioning on the quality of the water, not only the quality, but the future of the Springfield Water and Sewer Commission. This is an issue that we need to stay on top of, and that once we start meeting in subcommittee meetings again, that we, through the appropriate committee, sir, whether, whichever one you think is the most appropriate, that we continue to work with the Springfield Water Commission and the mayor's administration to protect, to improve our water system in the city of Springfield. With that, I yield, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor Davila. I'd imagine that through the Maintenance and Development Subcommittee chaired by Counsel Williams, I certainly will convey that to Counsel Williams upon his return. Counsel Letterman?
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. You know, I just wanted to, and I do think it's related to the motion, because we're talking about where the funding sources need to come from and what efforts need to go into, to making those funding sources happen. But, you know, the question that's been raised relative to the quality of the water is a fair one, and I think it's one that we've heard from a number of constituents about, you know, why would my rate go up when I'm receiving, you know, these noticed violations in the mail relative to HAA 5? And then just a general concern around water quality. And when I was chairman of the Committee on Health and Human Services, we held a series of meetings, and myself, Counselor Whitfield, and Counselor Allen, when the HAA 5 issue first came up. To better understand it, we met with toxicologists, we met with the Water and Sewer Commission, Bay State, all sorts of folks. And to get a better understanding of what was causing that, and what was causing the HAA 5, which is what I think Counsel Brown is discussing, was the fact that we're using a large amount of chlorine in our treatment process. And part of the capital improvement plan that the Water and Sewer Commission is currently attempting to implement is to replace that treatment facility and allow for less chlorine to be used while still keeping the water safe. And so that would reduce the HAA 5. And so that's why I mentioned earlier about Flint and the really catastrophic mismanagement that led to the issues they faced there, because we have to, you know, balance this delicately. We don't want to see a rate increase that can't be supported by the residents, but we also can't go into a straight austerity situation where we, where we don't fund any infrastructure improvement. Because the answer to the question of what can we do to improve water quality and keep water quality safe is we must invest in the infrastructure. And so we can talk about where the money comes from and how to do it fairly, but what we cannot do is simply cease investment, because it's already been deferred for too long.
Thank you, Counsel Letterman. Madam Clerk, can you please call the rule on the motion? And then I will hand it over to give the floor to Counsel Finn, who has a question, followed by Counselor Curran, I see.
On approving the Third Amendment? Counsel Gomez?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Whitfield?
Was the Third Amendment to change the financial wording?
Yes, it was to change the financial wording to just support of.
Yeah, yes.
Yes, Counsel Davila?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Fenton?
Yeah.
Yes, Counsel Curran?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Ramos?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Williams, absent, Counsel Allen?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Letterman?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Edwards?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Brown?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Hearst.
Yes, the amendment is approved, Counsel Finn, followed by Counsel Curran.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to thank Counsel Davila for putting this letter together and taking the lead on this subject, really critically important. Also want to thank the rest of my colleagues for participating in that meeting that we had with Mr. Schimmel and Chairwoman Otero last week. You know, I'm glad to see that the Water and Sewer Commission has announced that they're backing away from the proposal for 17% rate hike. But just historically, this particular fiscal year and this proposal from the commission has drawn a lot of attention to some of their recent budgeting practices. And every year over the last five fiscal years, there have been really significant increases in the residential rate. Back in FY17, it was about a 4% increase over the year before, then another 4%, then 7%. Last year was 12.5%. So, over the course of a six-year fiscal cycle, it's gone up close to 50%. And when you compare that to what we've been doing on the city side, it is really telling. So I'm glad that they've decided to reduce the proposal down to a whopping 9.5%, but that's still incredibly high, and we should all continue to be very concerned about this trajectory and the overall cost that we're seeing out of this department that's really closely tied to our taxpayers' pocketbooks. And so I want to also point out two things before I conclude and get ready to approve this here. First is that the commission now has a stabilization reserve account, which they established for the first time in 2017, only a few years ago. And since then, they've grown that account to about $12 million, which is not an insignificant amount of money for an organization whose annual budget is somewhere close to the range of 90 million. It's a very significant amount, actually. And it's a very significant amount of money that was raised in a very short period of time. So if you connect the dots, it's directly tied to this very substantial increase that we've seen over the last few years. I want to also say that the report that the commission just released a few hours ago, saying what they're proposing to do with the rates and the adjustments, it's a really interesting report, and everybody should read it. I just, since we've been on this meeting, I've been reviewing it on the commission's website. It is incredibly empirical and symmetrical. For the first time since I can see them reporting numbers going back about seven years, across the board, every rate, every water rate, every sewer rate, every residential rate, municipal, commercial, hospital, industrial, restaurant, everything is increased by an even 9.5%. And, you know, to be able to make that level of precision decision-making when it comes to the rate increases that are going to be happening for next year's fiscal plan, tells me that there is some level of cushion built into it through the creation, I presume, of this stabilization reserve account. You look at any other year, the rates and the context in which they change, they vary greatly. One might go up 12, another could go up 7, and everywhere in between. But this new financial report we just received a few hours ago says 9.5% for all ratepayers, regardless of class, regardless of water, regardless of sewer, across the board. And so I'm going to continue to follow it closely, I know that my colleagues will as well. I intend to participate in the hearing tomorrow. Very grateful for the commission's consideration in making this very substantial reduction. But I think that as a body, we have to continue to monitor this situation as we go into next year, just because of the trajectory that we've seen this, we've seen over the last five fiscal years. The other thing, just in closing, is that, and I know Counsel Curran's speaking next, and he's talked about opening up the books. I would really support that as well, because one thing we don't see here is what type of free cash are they carrying year over year? I mean, the level of detail that Pat Burns and TJ's financial team provides to us in financial accounting for us to review numbers is really great and thorough. The report that we're given from the Water and Sewer Commission, it's thorough in terms of water quality and in terms of their capital expenditures, but not in terms of their revenue and expense budget. That takes the form, at least of what I've received, of a PowerPoint presentation. And so I'm going to be interested in seeing those books opened up a little bit more in the interest of protecting the Springfield taxpayers moving forward. But I do want to thank again Counsel Davila for putting this resolution together, and I think that because of our efforts and the outcry from the public, we've really seen a positive change in these rates from the commission, which I'm also grateful for.
I concur, Counsel Finn, Counsel Curran, followed by Counsel Brown.
I'll talk quickly, because I think my phone's about to power off. But I want to thank all the councils for the work on this issue. It's an important issue to the residents of Springfield and the region. And certainly, I thought our committee on the whole meeting was very constructive, and I thought, working together with the commission, perhaps we can come up with further constructive issues to address the challenges that Springfield Water and Sewer is facing. And mainly, I think what we have to lobby for and advocate for is a stronger connection with Beacon Hill and funding. It isn't as if the funding is not there. There was a bond bill in 2018, and the town of Palmer got about $2 million. Northampton got about $2 million for the Water and Sewer. The town of Southbridge got $2 million. But Springfield and the Springfield Water and Sewer Commission didn't get anything out of that bond bill. And so what that tells me is Governor Baker needs to really make it a focus, the quality of water here, not just here in Springfield, but all of Western Massachusetts, and the towns that Springfield Water and Sewer face. Currently, there's a $16 billion bond bill in the legislature right now. It was passed in the House, it hasn't been passed in the Senate. I don't know if there's anything in there for Springfield Water and Sewer, if there can be, but with $16 billion, I imagine there could be some exceptions or carve-outs made. But I just really would call upon Springfield Water and Sewer and Governor Baker to really make this a priority of getting some infrastructure funding for the Springfield Water and Sewer Commission. Interestingly enough, and the Boston Water and Sewer Commission receives $10 million extra from the NWR. We do not receive that. So I do think that Beacon Hill has a role to play, and I would hope that Springfield Water and Sewer would make their presence felt on Beacon Hill and obtain some of that state funding. Other than that, I commend my colleagues, and I'm glad that the rates will not be 70%. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Curran, Counsel Brown, followed by Counsel Whitfield.
I first definitely want to commend my colleague, Counsel Finn. When it comes to common sense, sometimes it doesn't seem like a lot of people get behind it. Everyone has their power and their ability. I know for a fact that there were certain individuals and counselors who had issues with this. I know, like I said, I'm a rookie, I can promise you, I'm a rookie. I'm one of Counselor Whitfield's prodigies. She yell at me, and I yell at her, but she one of the strongest individuals in the council. We know, when it comes to it, we don't have a good quality of water. We don't. So they want more money, and you say the state, it's fine. If you say it's the state and you need more state money, I don't know if I can say it, maybe they want to make me have to recuse myself. Call me, and I'll get you the state funding for the water, because I work for the state. So we have to do better when it comes to the quality of the water, the water, the actual water. I commend my counselor, Victor. I commend you, Counsel Hearst. I commend Counsel Whitfield, I commend Counsel Letterman, Ramos, I commend you guys. I'm just wondering, when can we start testing and seeing, can I drink this stuff? And I'll just go, whatever you guys need, I'll do, that's all I need to know.
Thank you, Counsel Brown. We'll definitely, I'd imagine, counselors will follow up with you offline, for sure. Counsel Whitfield?
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Counsel Brown, for the compliments you've given me.
You know I love you.
But thank you, Counsel Davila, thank you for putting this together, and all the sponsors on the resolution. To, I want to thank Counsel Fenton, actually, because I'm a number budget person, so when he's coming to the table with this information, I am so impressed. I wanted to say, when I looked at the capital budget when we were on the call with the Water and Sewer Department, it said that the reserves was specifically, that reserve account was specifically created, this was my understanding, for the capital projects. I'm not sure if that is the case, but I would question how they can give a 9.2, I think, percent increase across the board as well. And why aren't we looking to increase some of the costs in other communities instead of just in Springfield? Also, I know how much do they pay for salaries? We need to see their real true budget, not just the PowerPoint slides that they're putting out and telling us. They said that they increased the senior and the disabled veterans' discounts from $2 and some change to $6.25 a month, so they increased the discount. But when you increase a bill, $400 over the past five to six years, that discount really still isn't helping them. And so we need more information. So I wholeheartedly support this resolution. I'm going to follow up with Counsel Fenton, because he made me research while we were on this call, and it's hard to even go on their website and find their true budget. Like, I really had to search for it. And it shouldn't be that difficult. Let us see the And it shouldn't be that difficult. Let us see the numbers. Let us see what's going on in each department at the Water and Sewer Department. Let us see what the executive level management is making. Let us see that type of detail, and then we can make an informed decision. Your PowerPoint slides aren't working for me. We need the numbers. So I'm going to leave that right there.
Thank you, Counselor Whitfield. Madam Clerk, on the resolve.
On accepting the resolve, Counselor Gomez?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Whitfield.
Absolutely.
Absolutely. Counselor Davila?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Fenton?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Curran? His phone may have died. Absent. Counselor Ramos?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Williams, absent. Counselor Allen?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Letterman?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Edwards?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Brown?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Hurst?
Yes, the resolve is approved. Madam Clerk, I believe there are two items on your unfinished business. For those of you who are not aware, what we are doing is, we are having our hearings meetings, what we're going to do is, we're going to open them up during our actual hearings meeting. And then we're going to give time for folks to rebut what was said during the first part of our hearing. And so we heard from the petitioners. We didn't hear from anyone who was in objection. We left a week for rebuttal. And so what will happen is that we'll start the hearings meeting during the hearings meeting. You will conclude the hearings meeting at our next regular meeting, which is what it is that we are doing now. And so, Madam Clerk, were there any, can you please call item number 15?
Mr. President, we're in order today?
Counselor Davila.
Thank you, Mr. President. I do want to give all the attention that these petitioners do deserve. I just ask you, if we could, we've been on this for two hours now roughly, if we could a 60-second break, so that we can't...
Refill the coffee?
No, no. Bathroom break, it would be greatly appreciated. Because I don't want to miss it, just a quick 60 second if I may.
We'll have a 60-second recess.
Thank you.
One minute.
I remind counselors, we are still live.
30 seconds.
Yeah, 30 seconds. I don't understand.
Just a housekeeping note, while we have everybody on the line, we are doing a public speak-out for four-hour regular meetings. So I just want to thank Focus Springfield. So if you do have any of your constituents who are wishing to speak, then they can call the city council office and they can sign up. And our administrative assistants have guidelines that they will convey to those individuals wishing to speak. So if anyone knows of any individuals wishing to speak on an issue, please convey to them that they can contact our city council chambers, at which time they will get the information that the individual wishing to speak out needs to speak out. So please, for those watching at home on television, please take advantage of reaching out to our city hall chambers, our city council chambers, in the event that you are wishing to speak on an issue. Counselor Brown?
Yes, and I want to, just real quick, while we're on break, commend the fact, just give you a shout-out, Counselor Melvin Edwards and Tracy Whitfield for having black children. I'm black, you black, we black, we black. So on the record, this is a black man. I want to let you guys know, for the record, I want to commend you for being the black city council president and all the work that you've done. And Tracy Whitfield, for all the black athletes. I know your sons are commendable people in the community. Love them.
One son.
You know what I mean. I'm like, you know, I almost feel like your son when you yell at me, kind of, but I love you. You know, you're the strength. And also Counselor Melvin Edwards, being a black man. I'm black and I can breathe, but I can't breathe.
Counselor Brown, so we will now, we convene. Madam Clerk, can you please call the next item on the agenda?
The next item on the agenda is for a special permit to operate a drive-up service window at 705 Liberty Street. It's a continued item.
So did we receive from anyone wishing to rebut anything that has been said?
No, we received no communication on the special permit at all.
Okay, so if there are no further questions of the petitioner, we will close that portion of the hearing. Again, if there are no further questions, and I believe we probably exhausted most of our questions for the petitioner at our last meeting, and we will close this portion of the hearing. We will close this portion of the hearing. Counselor Whitfield, sorry.
I'm confused, what portion we're at? Can we get a little reminder? Are we on the rebuttal side? What's happening?
We are on the rebuttal. Petitioners at our previous meeting had 20 minutes to speak in favor of the petition, followed by those wishing to speak against this petition. We heard from, I believe, two individuals representing the petitioner. I believe at least one of those individuals is on the phone now. And so we concluded that way. And we gave folks an opportunity for people to rebut during the week that we did not during this past week. Nobody rebutted anything that the petitioner said. Now find ourselves at a time in which we can either ask no questions of the petitioner or we can close the hearing into a local conversation amongst the counselors and then to be direct.
Okay, I do have a question.
We're in order, sir. We're in order.
Counselor Davila?
My apologies. I'm having a hard time. Somebody has come up a mic. I can't really hear you guys.
Counselors were not speaking, please use their microphones. Counselor Whitfield.
Thank you, Mr. President. For the petitioner, who am I talking to? Robert?
Mr. Levesque.
Okay.
On the phone.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Mr. Levesque? Is, I think someone asked last time, was there going to be any outdoor seating or no?
Yeah, if it's okay with the council, I'd like to just present the plan on my screen. I could just show you that real quick.
Please state your name and address for the record, sir.
Yes, sir. Rob Levesque from our Levesque Associates, 64 Blueberry Ridge, Westfield.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to try to share my screen right now. Okay, hopefully you folks can see that.
Yeah, we can see it.
Yeah, it looks great. Looks great. Okay, great. Thank you. So this, again, so just to clarify, this is the proposed building here. There is no proposed outdoor seating area. Due to the proximity of the building to Liberty Street, we didn't have enough room to feel comfortable to safely have folks sitting out front. And given the constraints of the site, we really didn't have the wiggle room to do that. This is the plan. There is no outdoor seating shown. But I'd be happy to answer any other questions.
Thank you very much.
If you could stop sharing your screen, sir. Are there any other questions for the petitioner before we close the hearing? Counselor Brown?
Are you, you this the developer or do you own it? Do you know the owners?
I am not the developer or the owner. I am a land consultant. We are civil engineers, land surveyors. We are the project consultant. The owner of the property is Salmar Realty. The proponent is Peter Martins from Salmar Realty, also represented by Paul Karen, the local liaison for Dunkin' Donuts in the area.
Okay, and where are they at?
They were unavailable to attend. We talked briefly with the planning department, and they felt that we should have one of us here for tonight for questions, but they did not expect many questions. That was the understanding that we had.
And how many local people do you have on the project?
In terms of employees?
Yeah.
I believe that was answered at the last meeting by Mr. Martins. I don't want to speak out of school because I don't recall the exact number.
I mean, working on that actual project and everything, yeah.
So there's, you know, there's probably five to six local folks working on it now. Under construction, there could probably be upwards of 15 to 20 folks. And I believe they were in the 15 range in terms of employees. And my understanding is they try to hire from as close to the building as possible. I believe that was stated last time.
And I don't, I mean, can you hire more? And if you can, can you talk to maybe my colleague, Counselor Ramos, to see if there might be some union people? I mean, I agree 100%, you know, but sometimes it seems like I hear some local folks don't get the jobs that they need, so if you can maybe talk to some of my colleagues. I mean, I'm all for it. But if you can talk to some of my colleagues, see if they're the union people, if they got some local people for jobs, that's all I'm wondering.
Sure. Yes, sir. Through the president, that's not my role, but I will absolutely relay that to Mr. Martins, who would be in charge of that.
Okay, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Counselor Brown, if there are no further questions from the council, we will close that, this portion of the hearing. We will open it up for debate amongst the council. If there are anyone wishing to have, make a comment or ask a question amongst the counselors, do so at this time.
Mr. President, I have a motion.
Ah, yes. Counselor Fenton, sorry.
Thank you. I make a motion that we insert a new condition 22 to this special permit as follows. And this matches, by the way, this was discussed at the hearing, and this is also word for word the condition that was approved on their first special permit, which subsequently lapsed due to construction delays. So the condition is as follows. Lobby operations from 5:00 AM to 10:00 PM. And drive-up window to operate from 5:00 AM to 12:00 AM. So.
There is a motion
Check it.
negotiated by Counselor Gomez. Madam Clerk, can you please call the rule on, is there any discussion on that motion? Ain't none. And Madam Clerk, can you please call the rule on that, on the motion?
On amending the conditions of the special permit, Counselor Gomez?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Whitfield?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Davila?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Fenton?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Curran?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Ramos?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Walsh?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Williams, absent. Counselor Allen?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Letterman?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Edwards?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Brown?
Yes, definitely.
Yes, definitely, Counselor Hurst.
Yes. The amendment is approved. Counselor Gomez?
I just want to say that I'm in full support of this project, and that is all, Mr. President. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Counselor Gomez. If there are no further questions or comments from the council, this requires a two-thirds roll call vote for passage. Madam Clerk, can you please call the rule?
On approving the special permit for 705 Liberty Street, Counselor Gomez?
Michael Centron, Paul Coombie, 2015, yes.
Yes. Counselor Whitfield?
Thank you, Counselor Gomez, yes.
Yes. Counselor Davila?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Fenton?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Curran?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Ramos?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Walsh?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Williams, absent. Counselor Allen?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Letterman?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Edwards?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Brown?
Yes, definitely.
Yes. Counselor Hurst?
Yes. Counselor Whitfield on the reasons. Is it Counselor?
Me? It's Counselor Gomez.
It's you.
Reasons.
I don't have that paper in front of me.
Okay.
Your site has been, and that's all I remember.
For the reason.
Your site has been accepted, and it doesn't impact the neighborhood around you or with the residents.
And if, if we just want to wait one moment, I know our administrative assistant sent that out today, Counselor Gomez. So you should have it in your...
I'm checking right, I'm checking right now, sir.
So if you guys could just bear with us for a moment, my apologies.
Mr. President, who was the one that sent that to me, sir? Was it our, one of our secretary, our administrative assistants, or was it Ms. Davis?
It was Kelly who sent it out.
Yes, she did. I'm ready. Sorry about that, sir. My complete apologies to my colleagues. All right. Reasons, special permit, the reasons for granting a permit. The specific site is in an appropriate location for such a use, structure, or condition. The use as developed will not adversely affect the neighborhood. Adequate and appropriate facilities will be provided for the proper operation of the proposed use to incorporate the planning staff analysis into the decision at the basis of the findings. Thank you.
Do you want to call the rule on the reasons?
No, Counselor.
So do we not need to call the rule?
No, not for the reasons.
Okay. All right, special permit is approved.
We don't, because we always did.
Mr. President, I believe we could do a voice vote.
Normally, the problem with the voice vote is to do a roll call vote.
Shouldn't we take some kind of a vote, though?
I would defer to the clerk, Attorney Davis. Typically, we do do a voice vote when it comes to accepting the reasons.
On the reasons for approving the special permit, Counselor Gomez?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Whitfield?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Davila?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Fenton?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Curran?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Ramos?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Walsh?
Did you just call me?
Yes, I did.
Okay. Yes.
Yes. Counselor Williams, absent. Counselor Allen?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Letterman?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Edwards?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Brown? Yes. Counselor Hurst?
Yes, the special permit is approved, although it was difficult. Although it was difficult, we might be the first in the state to have actually had a hearings meeting and approved a special permit, considering everything that is going on. We were able to do it successfully remotely, so you all ought to commend yourselves. Counselor Walsh, followed by Counselor Brown. We have one more item on the agenda. Counselor.
I, I just had my hand up because I wanted to make sure that we took some kind of action, but another Springfield first.
Thank you, Counselor Walsh, Counselor Brown, sir, before we get to the next item.
I wasn't sure if the actual item that I was, um, they had mistakenly tried to say I would have to be recused from was not brought up today.
That, that is coming up next. That is the last item on the agenda. And so I will defer to Attorney Moore at the outset, just so you have a good understanding as to what it is that you need.
Because I would want Attorney Moore to understand that maybe I don't articulate things correctly, Attorney Moore. I speak, sometimes my ebonics isn't, I, I didn't say it the right way then. And before I could properly tell you, I was disconnected. It was something with social media. And I did explain it to Counselor Hurst, President Hurst. I explained and called him about it right after. So before I could actually get back on, it was decisions made and maybe assumptions made and stories made. I'm never overly emotional, Counselor.
So we'll let, um, we will let Counselor Moore highlight what it is that he thinks legally.
Yeah.
In light of. And we'll get to that in just a second, Counselor Brown. Counselor Karen, did you have a question? I see your hand, hand raised in the queue, sir, or Counselor Davila, I'm sorry.
I did, I did, President Hurst. I just wanted to know, point information, can I be recorded on that resolution regarding water and sewer? My cell, my cellphone here powered off.
Yes, I'll make sure I add you as a sponsor, Counselor Karen.
Thank you, Attorney Davis. Madam Clerk, can you please call the next item on the agenda?
The next item on the agenda is for a special permit to operate motor vehicle sales at 1103 1107 State Street.
Thank you. Attorney Moore, can you just speak briefly to, I heard at our last meeting, so Counselor Brown has an understanding as to what can and cannot happen right now, please?
Sure, let me, there we go, I'm you. Thank you, Mr. President. Sure, just very briefly, my understanding from the last hearings meeting that we had was that Counselor Brown had had certain interactions with the property developer and owner, such that he was basically the representation for that ownership within the special permit hearing. That type of position is something that the special permit granting authority really can't take. So we, we briefly discussed that the best course of action is likely to have the counselor just recuse himself from participating and have the counselor participate with the ownership present to kind of present the permit request. That being said, in light of Counselor Brown's comments a moment ago, I guess I'll just allow the counselor to sort of elaborate as to perhaps explain, you know, what was said during the last hearing and then perhaps my evaluation is different, but based on what I heard from the last hearing from the counselor, I would say that he would have to recuse himself as, I'm not sure he can be impartial than what was said the last time. So I, I'd be happy to turn it over if there's any confusion as to what I said the last time or this time. I'd be happy to kind of go into more detail. But I'm not sure, you know, there are any facts to assume. I, I certainly heard what I heard and I just, you know, you, you render an opinion based on the facts that you hear. So I'll allow more facts to be discussed at the moment. Really not sure what else we can talk about on the subject. If any question, if you have any answer.
Before we move on, Counselor Brown, did you have any questions or did you want to say any final comments? If not, then I believe you can stay on the call, you just can not vote. Is that accurate, Attorney, Attorney Moore?
Yeah, I think that's fine. As long, as long as there's no participation, there's no reason he can't stay on the call, yeah.
I, I had, a- as far as the actual vote and all that, I, I, I love Attorney Moore. I mean, he's a great guy, he does a great job. But like I explained, when it comes to representing our constituents, and if I didn't word it properly, saying that I was representing this actual constituent, I wasn't getting paid, there was no money, there was no monetary. When I met with him, I understood the injustice and I said I would take on his fight. That's what I meant. If I said it incorrectly and that now I gotta recuse myself every single time, I want to fight for one of my constituents, then I don't know, is that what I have to do?
So Attorney Moore, can you just speak to how?
I'd be happy to, yes, I'd be happy to. There's a big difference between your role as a city counselor and your role as the special permit granting authority for a special permit for land use. Those are two completely different things. So that's something you need to understand, Counselor. And when you're talking about representing someone who's your constituent, you are not allowed to represent that person in a special permit granting situation as a city council. That's about as clear as I can be. So whether you said it differently or not, that's what the State Ethics Commission would say. If you would like to ask them for an opinion, I would recommend you do so. I've sort of given my opinion.
And can I ask you?
So hold on, hold on, Counselor Brown.
Please.
Yes, I'm, I'm going to turn the floor over to you in a, in a second. I just, one, want Attorney Moore to make sure that he has an opportunity to finish. And then two, Attorney Moore, if you could just speak to the implications of Counselor Brown disagreeing with your, with, with your advice to recuse himself, what would be the implications of him remaining on the remote conversation and participating and ultimately voting? And if you could just speak to that and then I'll turn it directly over to Counselor Brown.
Sure, that's a good, that's a good question, Mr. President. As any attorney will tell you, you can give your client advice, but you cannot make them follow your advice. So if Counselor Brown wishes to continue and participate, he certainly can do that. I, I certainly can't stop him. So I'll give my advice as to what I have heard and what I believe is accurate. Again, it's only based on what I learned from my own listening to the hearing. So I'll, I'll sort of leave it at that. You know, I, I, if, if, if someone were to come in after our hearing and challenge the validity of the permit, there could be a risk that Counselor Brown's participation could, you know, render the proceeding invalid. You know, that's something that's down the road. It's, it's, it's something I won't, conjecture is going to happen. But if you, if you ask for, you know, what, what are the possibilities, that's certainly a possibility.
I'm sorry, Attorney Moore. So Counselor Brown, I'm going to give you the final word and then we're going to proceed to this last item on the agenda. So I will let you have the final word and then we'll move forward with the hearing. Although I do see Counselor Whitfield's hand raised in the queue. Go for it, Counselor Brown.
What I would say to Mr. Moore, one thing about me, I'm never one to throw the race card. I have a black and white kid. So for you to say your ears, your ears aren't my ears, okay? I know what I did, I know who I represent, okay? So what you think isn't what I think. You don't represent my community, you don't understand my community, then if you.
So Counselor Brown, I, I just want to make sure that this is not an indictment, Attorney Moore.
I understand what you're saying. I don't mean it like that.
What are we talking about here?
Li- listen, I don't.
I have a point of order. I have a point of order.
Yes, yes, yes. Counselor Brown, I am going to let you conclude, but if we could certainly be respectful of Attorney Moore, who was simply giving his advice, it would be greatly appreciated.
And I, 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 I appreciate you, Mr. Hurst, Counselor Hurst and President Hurst. But if anyone's going to tell me that I have to recoup myself when it comes to representing my community, I think something's wrong with that. I do respect it, but I know if you talk to this man, he's been a person who's helped the community for our whole lives. He's helped with litter, he's helped with tires, he's helped. I mean, I don't think, if you don't know who he is, then I don't even understand what the argument was. It was about them harassing him. They're harassing him and they got caught harassing him.
So, so, so Counselor Brown, I certainly appreciate what it is that you have to say. I think it might be best for all of us if we move forward with the hearing. Counselor Whitfield and then Counselor Letterman, you had a point of order. Counselor Whitfield, the floor is yours.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. On behalf of the council, I don't think that there was any racial intent that came from Attorney Moore. I think he was given some advice so that we don't face a situation where there is a lawsuit and we also don't face a situation where the proponents permit is revoked. And so as your mentor, I would suggest that it's one vote. You recuse yourself and this is just a suggestion that you. Okay, I'm sorry, let me finish on, you recuse yourself and then we get clarification on what it means to represent someone in the future that will cause you to have to recuse yourself again and so that those mistakes aren't making again. Because I asked you on that call, are you representing? I asked you, are you representing the proponent and you said yes? And that's when Mr. Moore said.
Died.
I know, I, I'm sorry, let me finish. And then that's when Mr. Moore, I asked for clarification and Attorney Moore clarified that you should recuse yourself. Now, it's one vote, it's not going to be the end of the world, it's not going to be the end of the world. And a lot of folks, a lot of the counselors were already supporting the proponent. So let's just get through the hearing, do the right thing, so we don't face a lawsuit in the future and the, the proponent is, permit is not revoked in the future for anything that is done in this meeting. So can we agree to move forward and do that?
So we are going to move forward. Madam Clerk, I do see some hands raised in the queue. Counselor Letterman, I know you had a point of order. Did we call the final item on the agenda as? Did we call that, Attorney Davis?
We did. We did, we called the matter.
So again, similar to our last special permit, this item was continued. We heard from the petitioner, who had 20 minutes at our previous meeting or to go a representative of the petitioner. I do know that the petitioner is on this call now. We'll certainly give him an opportunity during the rebuttal phase, which will be after I finish speaking, to introduce himself to the body. I do not believe there were any rebuttals that were, that were given to the council or called in. Is that accurate, Attorney Davis?
Yes, that is accurate.
Okay, so with that being said, I do believe we have Mr. Hussein, who is the individual who is looking for the special permit. Mr. Hussein, at this time, if you could introduce yourself in, into the special permit.
Hello, this is, I'm Dr. Hussein, the owner of the 1107, 1103 property, State Street. You hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. So, Mr. President and Honorable, all the counselors, yeah, that's the place I would like to make a, a, a clean and nice place in the, in this neighborhood. It's being, there was a three family house abandoned and city tore it down and abought from the city, the property. As being, it's, it's since that time, it's, it's been a problem for the, with all the people throwing trash kind of things there. And I took, took over this property, trying to make it a nice corner with a nice, almost hundred thousand dollar investment with the, you can say that professional landscaping and, and paving kind of things. So I can use it as a car lot and a few car sale place. So that's what I'm looking. So I don't know if anything I have sales, so that's my only thing to do so. So please, yeah, consider that. I'm hearing that all that issues, I don't think so, you know, that we have problem to make this lot nice, good and putting a hundred thousand dollar on that abandoned land, almost it was, but I'm going to do so as good use I can.
Thank you, Mr. Hussein. Is there anyone else wishing to speak on behalf of the petitioner during this rebuttal period?
No, I, no, I'm, I'm, I'm here, Dave Gabey.
Mr. David's here, he's my consultant, he's what.
Mr. Gabey, did you want to say anything during this five minute?
I only have to say that, that the proposal appears to me as an experienced person in the neighborhood as a, as an appropriate use for an adjacent lot to automobile oriented gas station kind of a use. And he's complied with all of my suggestions as far as landscaping and, and paving. And in fact, the planning department has been directly involved in the landscaping plans.
Thank you, Mr. Gabey. Can you please state your address for the record?
I'm, I live at 1105 Worthington Street, Springfield, 01109.
Thank you, and Mr. Hussein, can you please state your full name and address for the record?
Yeah, 1103, 1107, oh, where I live, okay. It's a 37 Mohave Road, Booster, AM.
Thank you. If there is no one else wishing to speak on behalf of the petitioners and if we did not receive anyone wishing to speak on behalf of the opponent to rebut anything that was said, we will now open the floor up for the council. In the event that a council has any questions of the petitioner, Counselor Letterman.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Hussein, thanks for being. So, look, one of the questions that came up quite a bit. Previous hearing.
Can we make sure to mute our microphones if we're not speaking? Sorry, Counselor Letterman.
Hi, Mr. Chairman, that may actually be me, there's a Basset Hound here and he is being retrieved. But my question for Mr. Hussein, Mr. Hussein, I, I think you're still with us. There was a lot of questions relative to the current state of the lot and the recommendations from the planning department relative to the improvements that would need to be made for the permit to finally issue. And so I just wanted to see what your thoughts are on the conditions, your plans for improvement of the lot prior to the issuance of the permit and specifically the truck body that's stored there, what your plans for removal of that are.
Need to unmute yourself, Mr. Hussein.
Okay, okay, you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, that tractor trailer is actually a, a used for, uh, the recycle the tires. Because people keep throwing the tires, especially because we have a running auto repair shop here. And people keep throwing from the neighborhood here and there, used tires on that place as well. We have, so I have that tractor trailer, which is movable thing, you know, once it's filled up, the, the company will take it away and give me the empty one, so we can keep using for recycling the tires. And that's not going to be like sitting over there forever. It's, it's a, it's like a movable thing, you know, so. And that would be, you know, it's already fenced actually, so nobody can see that. It's a temporary fence against that. So all you can see is a top three or four feet trailer body. And it's, it's about forty feet trailer, so once it's filled, it will be removed and they can give the other one. So this will be a part of my business.
Thank you.
Can I address that? Should I address that?
Yes.
Yeah, my consultant.
Okay, if I could, counselors, the issue is, as, as Jesse pointed out, the issue is the improvement of the property. The improvement of the property has been appro, has been proposed and approved according to every planning, every, every planning guideline. You know, for the, the issue is that the tire recycling system requires this removable truck trailer. And, uh, um, the planning director, um, is my feeling that, that removal of tires, removal of spare tires or waste tires is critical to this kind of business and is critical to the neighborhood. I recommended to the planning director that some solution be found, and he feels that, for some reason, there's some sort of inherent vision in the zoning code that trailers or, um, it's not a truck body, it's a tra, it's a trailer from a truck, or prohibited. So what I suggested was, there needed to be apparently some sort of reform to the guide, to the zoning ordinance, because this is a logical and appropriate use, because it keeps the community clean. This is why Attorney, by Council, former Counselor Williams and Counselor Brown were so emphatic that they wanted to support this and to support keeping the neighborhood clean by using this rec, truck, tire, tire recycling system. The alternative which other, other similar businesses are using is to have a little fenced area in the back of their business, where they throw tires, which is nowhere near as neutral, neutral for the community as what Mr. Hussein is doing. This is much superior, more clean, more safe. So what I would suggest is that we should isolate the issue of the improvement of the property, because the improvement of the property is not only proposed but agreed to by the petitioner and the planning department. The issue is this technical zoning provision that someone feels, feels very strongly about, that even though the, the trailer is off the street, not visible, not causing any problems, clean and brand new, and part of a commercially, um, commercially provided recycling system, that somehow or the other, that's a problem. So I think that's a very much a counselor issue.
Thank you, go ahead, Counselor Letterman.
Sure, thank you, well, I, I don't know that we can separate the two issues, because they're one in the same. They're on the same property and it's a special permit application. So it sounds like the answer is, is that you don't intend to remove the truck trailer, because the truck trailer is essential to the operation of a, of a tire recycling situation. Um, I mean, that sounds to me like it's a special permit conversation in and of itself. Um, so I, I guess we'll probably hear from Phil on that momentarily. But my next question would be, uh, or just my, my, the part of my question from, from the first time, which was relative to all of the conditions on the permit, which require, I would say, extensive renovation of the property. I was over there today, I took a drive-by, um, observed for a little while. And, uh, you know, it's very clear, I mean, the, the property currently is, is not, the property, the exact spot for the special permit for the car lot sales, is not exactly in, uh, the condition that it needs to be in yet. So my question is, is do you understand the work that the planning department has asked you to do in order for the permit to grant, and are you prepared to, to make that investment?
Y, y, yes, sir, uh, that's what I'm asking for the permits, any, uh, this, special permit is actually a promise to me that, that's why I can start investing the money on the lot, so I can use for the purpose, you know? So that's what I'm going to do. We already submitted the, the landscaping plan, we submitted the, uh, the other plan for the paving, you know? Everything's all set, but I need some kind of word from the city for the special permit, so I can start doing investment.
And that's, that's fair, that's fair, as long as, as long as the petitioner is clear on what the conditions are. My last question would just be, Mr. Hussein, I think you said your address was in Worcester. So are you gonna also be, are you there every day? Are you gonna be the manager of, of the car lot itself, or will you hire somebody to do that?
Oh, I love Springfield, I've been, uh, coming to the city since last fifteen years, uh, five days a week, sir. It's like, uh, last seventeen years, I'm coming every day here, yes.
Thank you, Counselor Letterman, uh, Counselor Whitfield, followed by Counselor Gavila.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, to the petitioner, I didn't understand what you were saying about moving the tractor trailer. I think that I agree with Counselor Letterman, that that's a separate issue. Um, regardless what Mr. Gabey says about, um, the use of it for the business, we have laws and permits, and we cannot, um, without it being a change, we cannot just make the exception, because then that becomes, um, the norm. So I need a better clarification on what you're saying about the trailer.
Oh, okay.
I know that you're, I know that you're saying that it's for the tires that you recycle, um, but you said it's not gonna be there long as well, so what do you mean by that?
No, no, I mean that, that's not a permanent thing, you know, like, perma, people say, people have the, the trailer and this, they leave it there forever, and they empty it from the same place, and they fill it up at the same place. No, it's movable trailer, once it's gonna be filled up, I will, I will send this back to the, uh, tire recycling place, and we're, we're gonna bring it back, and, uh, for the, for the same use, uh, we're gonna continue. So that's what I'm asking, it's, it's not a permanent, it's, it's just part there, I mean, it's not a permanent place there.
Okay, so I wanna hear from Phil on that, and then my second, um, question to you is you said that you need the special permit in order to clean up, is that not already your property?
Oh, that's my property, I bought this, this, uh, actually, I, I bought this from the city, this called, this, uh, small lot, and, uh, and I did, uh, include in my existing property. So I would like to have that place using as a smaller car lot, or car, car for sale, used car sale, for almost five cars. So, so I can, you know, uh, since I'm, you know, doing that investment for the cleanup and paving and all those things, so, uh, I can sell small cars there, uh, only five cars, and, uh, it's gonna be used for that purpose as well.
Okay, thank you for that, I understand that, but I think that, it sounded like to me that you were only gonna clean it if the special permit was granted. And what I'm trying to say to you, that since it's your property regardless or anyway, that that property should be cleaned and maintained.
No, 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 that, sorry, you misunderstood. Uh, property is already cleaned, and I, I said the, I said that property is already clean, I'm gonna keep it clean. Uh, the thing is now to do the paving, the paving work is very expensive paving work, yeah, as you know. So I'm doing the paving after that, you know, and it, it looking more nice. I already put a gravel, uh, the stone kind of things, so, but I need to pave, it looks better in that shape.
Hmm.
And then, yeah, uh, sorry, and, and fencing as well, that's good.
All right, thank you. Um, and then my final question is, um, Counselor Brown has said you do a lot in the community, and I just wanna know about some of those things that you do for our community.
Oh, okay, yes, uh, uh, this place, when I bought, about sixteen, seventeen years ago, uh, there was almost abandoned gas station type, like, was, uh, opening by the, uh, uh, garage hours, because, uh, the, uh, owner was mechanic himself, uh, previous owner. So he used to open it from nine AM to five PM. And, and what I did, actually, I expanded my store, I invested, uh, in a building. I, uh, did about two thousand square foot, uh, convenience store, uh, and that's what I, you know, uh, people are, they have a convenient for the, all the drinks, soda, breads, kind of thing, and, uh, uh, is, is a lot, my customers, uh, is very, uh, uh, what you can say is like, uh, uh, they respect me and respect my business, and they, they, they welcome me here, uh, uh, selling these kind of stuff, you know, and making this place alive. Uh, used to be a dead place, uh, so I think is, and then the community thing is, you're talking about, like, I told you, people giving me the, uh, those tires here free, which the other, other, other shop take twenty dollar, twenty-five dollar each tire. I'm taking free from them, you know, sometimes they throw it there, sometimes they ask me, "Please, you can recycle." Okay, I do that for them, uh, these kind of things, and they have, you know, since we have a repair shop, uh, I always help my community, uh, for small, uh, repairs kind of things, you know, and sometimes they don't have money to pay me, uh, uh, and I wait for months to pay me back for that, or sometimes they don't. I mean, but I'm still helping the community, uh, either way, uh, so what I can do and what I can afford.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Whitfield, did you wanna hear from, uh, from Phil, Counselor Whitfield?
Yes, I do.
Uh, Phil?
Yeah, um, uh, first of all, I, I just, I just wanna make it clear that, you know, this is not the planning director's or Phil Dromy's opinion, because I don't like tractor trailers. You know, I, I've got one book I've gotta go by, and that's the zoning ordinance. And unfortunately, in business A, the storage of a tractor trailer, because this tractor trailer, although it moves, is stored there. So a full one, I mean, an empty one is brought there, it sits there for several months, which I, you know, I, I've seen the same tractor trailer there for a couple of months. It then gets filled up with tires and moved out, and a new one comes in. Um, so it, it is considered to be the storage of tractor trailer. So unfortunately, again, under our zoning ordinance, that is not allowed in business A. Um, there are options for Mr. Hussein, he could apply for a variance from the Board of Appeals to see if he can get that waived. There also is maybe another option rather than a tractor trailer, is there a storage container? Is there a shed? Is there an addition to the building where these tires could be placed? So I think there's options, I'm not sure this necessarily has to hold up the approval of the special permit, but at some point, this tractor trailer is going to need to be addressed, because it, it has been cited by the city, and you can argue whether they're, you know, right or wrong, but, um, I see that they cited it sometime last year, so. Hussein has been aware that this is an issue, and, and at some point, it has to get addressed, one way. But I, I certainly don't object to the special permit, it's an appropriate use for a used car lot there. I, I'm very happy that Mr. Hussein has, has cleared the, cleaned the property, and, and he did add some fencing. So, uh, the tractor trailer is clearly visible, I drove by the other day, and I can see it clearly. There is a, there is a stockade fence there, but you can see the top of the trailer. So again, uh, you know, again, I, I'm not sure this needs to hold up the special permit, if the city council is looking to approve it, but down the road, this, this trailer needs to be addressed.
Mr. Hussein, are you willing to move the trailer?
Well, I can, I can apply for the, as, uh, Mr. Counselor said, that, uh, uh, I can apply for the variance, so that will be the other option for me, I can, I might use.
Tom, variance, I'm not.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, I mean, you, you, that's, that's certainly an option, is, is I believe you could apply for a variance to, that's, that's, the Board of Appeals is really the only author, you know, granting authority that, that can waive the underlying zoning requirements. I believe that, you know, I would have to defer to Mike Jacob on that, but it's, that's certainly a conversation we can have.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor Whitfield, uh, Counselor Gavila.
Thank you, Mr. President, uh, Phil, uh, gonna be a pointer with my question, I'm confused. Uh, what is specifically that we are applying for with this permit? Is it just car sales?
Yeah, it's, it's for the accessory used car sales. So he's, he's allowed up, he's, if he gets the special permit, he's allowed to sell up to five used cars at this location.
Correct, now, I'm gonna get to the trailer issue in a second, uh, but I do recall the last meeting that you had mentioned that Mr. Hussein, uh, by the way, Mr. Hussein, I'm glad to see you here today, uh, something about the property having to be paved before, and I wasn't, did I, did I hear that correctly?
No, i, it, it has to be paved as part of the, uh, as a part of the use.
Part of the use, okay.
So, so I, I, I certainly understand that, you know, to, to, to second Mr. Hussein, paving is extremely expensive, so I could understand his reluctance to go ahead and do that until he gets the special permit. But as part of the special permit, you know, in order to store cars on a lot, it has to be paved, so.
Okay, and so, uh, uh, to Mr. Hussein, you do understand that if you do get a permit, you have to pave the lot, correct?
Yes, yes, sir, yes, of course, yes.
Now, Phil, going back, uh, going back to the, uh, trailer issue, uh, along with the tires, because I keep hearing the trailers, I keep hearing the tires, and tires, and trailers, and trailer, and tires. Uh, you say that on the business A, there's no storage of trailer, that's, that's the ordinance, that's the law. It is what it is, correct? Uh, now, what's the issue with the tires and the trailers? Is he storing the tires in the trailers?
Yeah, that's my understanding, I, I defer to Mr. Hussein, but I believe he, he, they, they load the tractor trailer with the used cop tires, it then gets delivered to a recycling location.
But before I get to Hussein, you know, why will a car sales law need, need that many tires? It's just a million, it's a million for issues, two.
Well, there's other issues on the lot already, there's, there's an automotive repair facility that's part of this larger gas station.
That he owns?
Well, I, oh, I'm assuming he owns the property, I'm not sure he runs the.
Mr. Hussein, who, who owns the business that you're talking about?
That, that's me, sir, that's, the, that's, I own this, uh, uh, this repair shop and gas station, convenience store, this, this whole is, you know, it's a big lot, uh, and it's all this been since here, yes, I own that.
So, so you're using a tractor trailer to store tires in an existing facility?
Yes.
That you recycle tires, right?
Yes.
By recycle, you mean, you load them up, and you take them somewhere to be recycled?
Yes, that, uh, they take my tire company take it, you know, uh, they take it, and they, they will empty it, and they can bring me back, because otherwise, it's gonna be all over, the tires, the most, uh, tires I'm collecting is from the, from the neighborhood, that's the problem, it's a continued problem for me, that was, I, I, that was not there. I, I, I brought it here for last year, and I'm.
When you say collecting, what do you mean, sir?
Uh, there are people throwing on that lot, that, that lot we have behind, the one we're talking about right now. They keep throwing at nighttime, you know, evening time, uh, next day I come at my job, at my business, I'd have, I find three tires, four tires, here and there. I, I bring them in and throw in the, in that, uh, trailer, so I'm filling their way. It's not, my shop is a repair shop, we occasionally, we does the tires, but this is thing, as, uh, someone asked me before about what I'm doing for community, I think this is the main thing I'm doing for community, I'm collecting their tires, which they're not paying a hundred dollars somewhere for four tires to recycle, and I'm, I'm collecting their tires and throwing it there, and I'm paying from my own pocket.
I, 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 that's very kind of you, but please help me to understand, uh, I'm gonna try to be as brief, as possible, Mr. President, but how many tires can you possibly pick up from the yard that requires a tractor trailer?
You, uh, you, if you say yearly, about forty tires I collected last year. And, uh, I mean, this, these tires take some room someplace, you know, I have no other place to throw them unless, uh, I pay them every day. If I collect them, okay, every week I pay, I call my company, and they charge about five dollar each tire, to just take from my place. You know, and that's a continued problem, and since I, I do tires as well, so when I have, uh, from the community, I do have my own tires also, once in a while, uh, we change, and that's what we're keeping there as well.
But, uh, and Mr. Hussein, I, I, again, I thank you, and, uh, for your, for your involving the community, for helping out, and this is where I'm having a lot of troubles, sir. You are, Phil has stated more than once that tractor trailers are not allowed. But yet, you continue to have a tractor trailer there with the argument that you have no place to put the tires. Do you see where the hesitation comes? Even though you're doing something good, by the other token, it gives me a little bit of palsy, because I'm thinking to myself, we give the permit, uh, we stop with this tractor trailer forever in that place. So could you take me over the line, sir, and, uh, that, could you explain that to me, and put me at ease?
Like I, I said, that, that tractor will be gone for a, maybe for fifteen days, uh, and then.
I think I lost him, Mr. President.
I think, I think he might have dropped off.
I think we all lost him.
Okay.
Yeah, he's gone.
Can we give him a few?
Same thing happened to me.
Certainly can have a recess, um, and hopes that he will come back on, these are the woes of technology, so we'll, sixty-second recess and, uh, give everybody a moment to breathe, and.
Hey, let's breathe about a guy who's recycling tires for the community.
Mr. President, maybe we can have, uh, one, somebody give him a call to let him know that he could rejoin?
I, I, I'd imagine that they should know, uh, if, if we don't, if they don't get back on in the next minute, then we will continue, uh, this hearing, um. There he is. There he is.
Hello, you hear me, sir?
Yes, yeah.
Sorry about, sorry about that. I lost the connection because this.
Yeah, Mr. President?
Councilor Davila, can you repeat your question, please?
Uh, yes, I'm saying, I'm saying, I'm glad you're back, sir. Uh, so, so I said, restating my question is, uh, again, thank you for the work that you do in the community and picking over those tires. Uh, but the reality is that as the law, as the ordinance states, the trailer is not allowed there, period. And those are the ordinance. And so it seems to me that you have stated a couple of times already. Uh, that the reason you continue to have the trailer there is because you have no other place to put the tires. So I need you to help me get over the finish line here, sir. Uh, by how do you, you know, if you've been asked before, I believe you were cited for it in the past. Uh, what's gonna guarantee us that you're gonna move that trailer there and then we don't have to get into that issue down the road? Because everybody comes to the special permit, they promise the heaven and we get something else in return.
Uh, I think the, the best thing is, as earlier mentioned, that someone, about the variance, I can do that and being, uh, part of my, this business, uh.
Yes, Mr. Hussein, I understand that, but that bothers me too. Because I don't think, sir, you acknowledge in the reality.
Kidding, kidding.
That the solution, you want to, if I may, in my opinion, you are sidestepping the ordinance already that there's no trailer there. So that puts me at a, sir, that you're gonna really in good faith move that trailer. Uh, to be honest with you, and I really want, I, I do take my colleague, Councilor Brown's word. Uh, and I do heavily listen to what he has to say, but in the interest of the, of the residents, sir. I, I'm having a difficulty with the explanation with this tractor trailer, sir. Uh, it seems to me you are sidestepping the issue, uh, and I'm, I am concerned with that. I am very concerned with that. Uh, so.
A number of councilors who have their hands.
Yeah, yeah, I'm just gonna, uh, uh, I just wanna ask, uh, if maybe, Phil, you could ask a question. If we were to move forward today, is there room for, uh, like a year review, special condition?
Yes, yes, we can, we can do so that.
Uh, no, question, Mr. Phil.
Sure.
With Hussein.
I mean, you certainly can, can add that as a condition to the permit if, if, if that's the desire of the council.
Okay, uh, if that's the case, I may, may wish to, uh, introduce that at the proper time. Uh, but I would love to hear more of the thoughts of the Vice Counsel.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilor Davila. Councilor Ramos, followed by Councilor Letterman.
Thank you, Mr. President. So where, where exactly is the trailer located? I'm, I'm looking at the G I S map. It's a point, uh, where exactly on this property is the trailer located?
Uh, it's on the backside of the building, my main building, at eleven oh seven St. Street, eleven oh three St. Street. It's on the backside.
You can't see it.
Okay. So it's right, is, so it abuts, it abuts the residential property behind your building, correct?
Yeah, with the fence, with the stockade fence.
Yes, and then there are two other structures on this property, which is the, the gas station.
Gas station, it's the convenience store, uh, repair shop, auto repair shop.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's the, yeah.
I'm looking at two structures. Are they both the gas station or is it the gas station and then the?
Uh, gas station and, uh, and, uh, uh, auto garage, auto repair shop. You see that? The big, the big one is the auto repair shop. And then there's a convenience store with the gas station.
Okay, so, um, so my, my concern, Mr. President, is, is about the trailer. Um, now I'm listening to, to the gentleman and I know it seems to me, um, just from what I've observed and from what I've heard in this testimony. Um, that he, he seemed, he means well, you know, it, it, he's not doing maliciously. Um, he is, however, in violation of an ordinance, um, which needs to be addressed. Uh, I, I purchased my first home in Indian Orchard in two thousand and seven. And one of the first things that I did was about a really nice swing set for my daughter, who was three years old at the time. And she loved it. She was out there every day playing in a swing set. Uh, two years later, uh, the vacant lot that was behind my house turned into a junkyard pretty much overnight. And, uh, the, the owners put these two big tractor trailers right against two inches away from my fence. And my daughter was so scared of those trailers that she would not even wanna play in a swing set anymore. Um, long story short, um, we knew that they, those trailers were, uh, in violation of the, the ordinance. Uh, those owners were repeatedly ticketed. I, I tried reasoning with the, with the owner. Um, he wouldn't have it. It just turned, turned into a big mess. And, uh, so, you know, I know what it's like to live next to this type of nuisance. It's not fun and it's not, uh, a, a nice sight, um, for anyone. So, um, I see the reasons and I've experienced the reasons why these things are not allowed, um, via ordinance. And I know why they not, uh, why they shouldn't be located next to residential properties. That's my concern. And so, um, there's, there's a law in place. There are options for the gentleman to, to, uh, to, to follow. If he does wanna keep some sort of storage in the exterior, um, I would recommend that he do so a, as part of, as part of a condition of the special permit. That, uh, the issue be addressed within the next ninety days, um, whether it's a variance, whether it's a, a new structure in place of, um, the tractor trailers. Uh, whatever, um, but they, but it should be addressed. I don't, um, uh, I, I don't, I, I don't want to continue. Um, you know, there, we, very, very rarely do we ever get an opportunity to, uh, to ask someone, uh, as part of a special per, permit. Um, you know, move your trailer, right? Because that, that's an issue. If the person doesn't have a special permit, then what, what are the options we have? And so here's our opportunity to tell this business owner, um, you have to address this issue, this concern. So my recommendation would be to make it part of it, make it a condition of the special permit that the trailer be addressed within the next reasonable time period. Plus, I'm, I'm, I'm thinking ninety days, um, but I'm open to, to amending that. Uh, but it does, in my opinion, Mr. President, has to be a part of a condition of the special permit.
Thank you, Councilor Ramos, Councilor Letterman, followed by Councilor Gomez.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. Um, so I agree with, I agree with Councilor Ramos and I, and I think that the, it's already a condition, at least on the permit we're considering now, that it would be removed. So I, I would support keeping that condition. Um, you know, I, I agree that the addition of the car lot would be an improvement over what is there to see it paved and landscaped and fenced appropriately. Um, would be an improved neighborhood. Uh, and so, you know, I, I'd like to see that done. Um, so I, I think the question becomes to the, the petitioner is, you know, will they comply with the condition to remove the trailer? And, and my other question would be is, you know, I understand that this is connected to getting rid of these tires, which are part of the other adjacent business. And I also understand you're taking some in from the community. Um, I, I'm wondering where they're going and, and if there's a different methodology that could be put in place other than the tractor trailer, right? Is there a, a way for there to be some sort of structure done or, or, and then have them picked up later? Um, so that would be, that'd be my question. The other thing that I will just say in all honesty is that I, I'm, I am a little bit concerned with the current condition of the lot. Considering that I was there today and it was really not in very good shape. There was, there was trash in the lot. The fence was sort of disassembled.
That's what you're doing it.
And so I, 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 I think I would just say that, um, I want it redone, but my, my concern is that, you know, ahead of a, a special permit hearing, the property is, is currently. At least, you know, I, I understand it's not paved and landscaped, but the trash should be picked up, you know, so that's, that's a little bit of a hesitation on my part. But that, that's my question is, would you agree to the condition? And if so, could you find an alternative method to handle the tire situation?
Oh, goodness. Did we lose him?
Lose him again?
No, he's there, uh.
That's what you're saying, you're muted. Just unmute yourself.
Okay, you hear me, sir? Okay. This is Hussein. You hear me?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Yes, the property is clean on, uh, actually a weekly basis. Uh, I don't know if, uh, some, I, we have something, some kind of things there. Uh, but I don't see any major, major thing, any, any big thing over there. Maybe, uh, I can look now, but I don't see anything is there. It's just, uh. Uh, you know, the candy rap, this kind of thing, you know, and people across the street is the, is a my, uh, liquor store, you know, they keep drinking the liquor and standing there at the corner, keep throwing the bottles inside. I mean, I, I can't be there twenty-four hours, but I'm doing maximum, uh, you know, cleaned up and, uh, that's it. I mean, there was a, uh, there was tires, uh, two, uh, two days ago, I picked up those two tires again. Um, these things were there. I mean, there's no major thing, you know, there, but a piece of, uh, maybe you've been looking, uh, the white, uh, the similar thing, you know, that was, you know, that will be picked up by the paving people.
Council.
Will you, will you follow the condition of the trailer? Will you, I mean, the condition of the permit is the trailer. So will you remove the trailer?
Yeah, yeah, we'll do. I will, I will do. I will take all the legal, uh, uh, you know, ways to do that if it's, if not, uh, uh, possible to have it like this. So variance is my next option. Uh, if I don't got, got the variance, then I obviously have to ask my company to remove it.
Thank you, by Council Letterman.
Um, I, I don't have any further questions, sir. The only thing I'd say is, is, is if a condition of the special permit is to remove the trailer. I don't even know if going to get a variance will actually solve that. If the permit says to remove the trailer, the, the trailer has to be removed. The variance will not overrule the permit, would be my understanding. Also, I think we vote on all variances. I think they eventually come before us, uh, so.
No.
No, they don't. Okay, wrong. That was zone changes. I apologize. Zone changes come before us. So I guess that would be, that would be my question is if we put it in the permit, you know, and they go get a variance, does that overrule the permit?
I noticed Phil has his hand up. We probably should give Phil an opportunity to speak to this issue.
Well, if it's gonna take this long, Mr. President, I'd like to unrecuse myself.
I'm not so sure you accused yourself in, in, in the first place.
I did, so I'd like to participate.
Okay, all right, sounds good. Um, I see your hand is up in the queue. We'll certainly, we'll certainly get to you, sir. Uh, Phil?
Well, I just wanted to point out real quick that, that, that right now, there, there is not a condition that says the tractor trailer has to be moved. I didn't add that because it just is a, is a, is a zoning issue, but.
What do you have to do with this?
Um, Councilor.
Just wanted to point that out.
Can, can I speak after Council Brown, Mr. President?
Uh, you, you, you certainly can, um.
As long as I have an opportunity to speak, Mr. President, let him.
Certainly will have an opportunity to speak. I, I absolutely got you. Um, it's very clear that you did not accuse yourself and you do not plan. Um, uh, Councilor Letterman, um, that suffice what it is that you had? Hold on.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, uh, Council Gomez, um, followed by Councilor Davila.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
We will need you.
All right, so, um, Mr. Hussein, um, the, the business that you have, your garage, that's right next to the, the gas station. How long has that business been in, been in operation?
Oh, this business, uh, sir, there is, uh, since last forty-five, fifty years, I think.
So that, that's been a business, maybe you've had, uh, well, you have, yourself have owned the business for forty, fifty years, no? Right? So you've used, how long have you owned the business?
No, I, I, I owned this, uh, last sixteen years, but the business.
Sixteen years, okay. All right, no problem. My question is, the, the, the folks that rent out, that run that business for you. Um, how long have they been there? Or is it you yourself that run the business and have employees there?
No, no, I, I myself run the, run the business, nobody else.
All right, so when did you be, acquire the adjacent lot in the back, um, that we're, that you're here for the special permit?
Uh, two years ago, I think.
Oh, two years ago? So, um, at that moment, when were you, um, when did you start storing, storing tires? Um, in, in that, uh, in, in that tractor trailer or that, that storage that you have in the back lot?
I, I've been, uh, for two years, since I owned that lot, uh, uh, I started collecting these tires, uh, since, I mean, I have a business. But I, I thought that's the, the best thing is to get that trailer. Last year I got it, the trailer, I got that last year.
Okay, last year. When was the, what, what, when, when was the first time that you, uh, were cited? Um, by the, the, by the city for having that, uh, trailer there?
Uh, about, I think about five, six months ago when they, when, yeah, yeah, after, after a few months, man, since I have it, they, they asked me to, yeah. They came over and they asked me for that. Actually, since this special permit is in process, they keep coming, the first time they came.
Okay, so, um, my next question is, have, uh, when you have been cited, have you paid anything towards the city in violations for?
No, I didn't. No, they never, they never, actually, they never give me any, any.
They never violated you?
No, no.
So up to right now, you have not received no violations? You have, uh, they have asked you before, because the special permit is in process, they have asked you to remove, uh, remove this, uh, container from the back, from the back, um, parcel. So, um, just a little, I thank you for answering your question. Just wanna give a little context to the situation where we're at now. Um, so from what I understand, I understand that the lot is, uh, residence, uh, A, I mean, uh, business A. Um, Phil, if I can have a question or a word, my friend?
Sure.
If you're there. Okay, thank you so much. Uh, Phil, is there any other, um, any other way or, uh, another use? That tractor trailer, uh, would be, uh, be able to be there and on that parcel other than business A?
Uh, I, I'm not sure I, I totally understand. You, you mean, what?
What I'm asking, what, what's another use that would make that? If he wants to do a zone change, right, instead of a variance, I'm just asking in general, if, what other use would it, we had, would it have to be for him to, uh, not fall? And, uh, fall industrially, okay, so we already know that's not gonna happen. All right, thank you so much, Phil. That was the only question. I just wanted to, uh, state that for the record. Um, so, uh, Mr. Hussein, when it comes to these specific, uh, parcels, I know you are in, uh, a position that, uh, is very hard. To, you know, trying to do the best thing possible for a neighborhood. My daughter actually used to live on Dresden. I know a lot of, um, that gas station and that car lot or that car repair place that does change tires. Essentially, you know, just to give a context of those types of businesses, because I've been around them my whole life, is that when they change tires, if the, the, the. The person that comes to that business doesn't elect to take the tires with them, they charge the person for that tire. Um, is that something that the business does, Mr. Hussein, that once you change the tire, if the, the, um, the customer doesn't wanna take the tire? You, you incur and, uh, make the customer pay for, for you taking the tire from them and, and they, and storing it in the back?
Uh, no, actually, the, the customer, we, we tell them that you wanna take your tires back, uh, with you or, uh, because our recycle company, they take, uh, like five dollars a tire. Uh, to recycle and we ask them, but what happened is mostly time, they refused me to pay five dollars for recycling and they go around the block and. Same time, evening time, or next day, they throw those.
They throw, they, they throw, no, I understand. I, I completely understand where you're coming from. I have, I have one of these uses, um, that happens, you know, tire repair shops that. You guys are taking the tires, because evidently what they end up doing is littering and throwing them around your property or in that empty lot, which is the only empty lot on Dresden.
That's right.
All right, so secondary to that and, uh, down in, in, in the, uh, recommendation and the conditions of my colleagues have seen. That what he's here for, aside from this, uh, this container, if he does not comply with what are, what are the conditions? And, and, and Mr. Hussein would be, uh, found negligent and he would have to pay two hundred dollars per day for, for the violation exists. So, Mr. Hussein, let's say today, if this special permit was to pass inevitably, and I want you to put this in good context, and, and I know you, you're very. if this special permit was to pass, inevitably, and I want you to put this in good context, and, and I know you, you're very, uh, well with numbers, because, you know, I've walked into your, your establishment, you run a well-fined oiled machine there, like a lot of, you, 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 you take care of your place. But essentially what's gonna happen is, once this, once you don't comply and move that, what's gonna end up happening is, aside from doing, uh, doing the neighborhood a favor by taking these tires in, when inevitably it's gonna happen, it's gonna require you while you're violating, you're gonna end up having to pay to keep that container there, two hundred dollars a day after the fact. So that ends up becoming a burden on yourself and might essentially tank because of your good Samaritan. And with me, I'm gonna be honest, I completely understand what you're doing, but essentially, um, a lot of my colleagues, um, have a problem with that in the back. Have you ever received a complaint um, from behind or next door about that, uh, that, whatever it's called, the, the tractor trailer in the back on the parcel? Has anybody complained or asked you to move it under the, other than the city or any of the neighbors?
Never, sir, never. We're not, I never have problems since I have that trailer. I do not have, I have, as I told you, a stocking fence. I do have a large trees behind, you know, so next to the trailer. So mostly the, the backside neighborhood, they don't see that. I don't have a complaint from them. And, uh, uh, there's not, not, it's not a right, uh, behind my trailer is direct house. Actually, that's their, uh, long lot behind. They don't even walk there sometimes.
All right. So as one of these, um, um, and just in the chat right now, Phil has corrected himself and says there is a condition as, uh, Counselor Letterman had stated, that says that you, if, if part of this special permit, if we do, if this passes tonight, you do have to move the trailer. It's part of one of the conditions and I guess whoever facilitated the conversation with, between you and the city, which you have stated that the facilitation happened with Mr., um, the gentleman with you again, what's his name again? I forget. Um, Mr.
Mr. David?
Uh, yeah, David, David, David. So when he facilitated the conversation with Phil, these were kind of the, the conditions that came before us. These conditions, we might add to them, but I don't see any of us on the council that's gonna eliminate any of them. So if this.
President, at one point.
Excuse, excuse, Mr. Counsel Brown, uh, respectfully, um, I would appreciate you just let me finish and then from there you may, you may speak, sir. So, um.
Waiting for twenty years.
No problem. And we completely understand that we're just trying to create a context of what the situation is, it, it, what it had, which is in problem. So, um, just moving forward to the fact that with what the conditions have stated, um, and the zoning regulations by law, um, if we pass this special permit today, even if, if I wasn't in favor of, of not moving it, regardless, it is a condition. So regardless of this passes today, he still has to move it. So no matter what, regardless of the timeframe and the amendment that wants to be placed in there, it's beyond us and the conditions to change those conditions. So what I, I'm just simply saying that you fully understand that we can accept this special permit as the conditions read, but moving forward, you're gonna have to move that, that trailer anyway. And if you don't, they're gonna, they're gonna charge you two hundred dollars a day. And that's all I want to do, is just more informational. So we completely understand what are the effects and impacts that he's gonna incur for doing a solid for the community. And it's gonna cost more to him to keep the trailer there than to motivate, to move it out. And I just want him to understand that completely. I, I am in favor of this special permit, but I'm, I'm really concerned that the price and the, that's gonna incur and, and what the city is gonna charge him for that being there is gonna actually hurt him and burden him more than him doing something, uh, good. It's gonna cost him more than a hundred thousand dollars. The investment is gonna be, is gonna be tremendous. It's gonna be, uh, out of this world. It's gonna be legit quote unquote bananas. And I don't mean, uh, no foul with that. I just want him to completely understand what's, what's at stake at the moment. Um, but moving forward, that's all the questions that I had, Mr. President, just a clear, concise understanding on what, what's at risk for the property owner. And if we can't come down to a consensus of what's gonna happen a, at this moment knowingly that we're not gonna, uh, I would, I wouldn't think that we're gonna, um, do a zone change for industrial A. He only has a chance to do something of a variance, but that is another conversation and what we have in front of us is this special permit. Now I would hate for him to get this special permit voted down and then have to come back in two more years and regardless, still have to move that, uh, that, 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 uh, that tractor trailer anyway in the process without him having to put it, put up that money.
Thank you, Counsel Gomez, uh, Counsel Fenton, followed by Counsel Brown. If you would like to speak, uh, then you certainly can speak after Counsel Fenton, sir. Counsel Fenton, the floor is yours.
Sorry, Mr. President. Thank you.
Counsel, Counsel Fenton, followed by.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. President. Um, Mr. Hussein, thank you for attending tonight and for sticking with us and answering all our questions honestly and candidly. Um, look, this is how I view this. Uh, every permit that we issue in the city of Springfield as a special permit is conditioned upon complying with the zoning ordinance. There's no getting around that. We're not in charge of compliance with the zoning ordinance. We're in charge of writing it. And then we have special permit power and we have zoning power, so zoning change power. So, I mean, I don't hear anybody suggesting that we should change the zoning ordinance to allow tractor trailers in business A. I would be really opposed to that. But at the same time, we're not the compliance entity. And I'm hearing from Counsel Brown and Mr. Gabey, uh, that the neighborhood is in favor of this and they see it as a betterment. Special permits are about the use, not being in compliance with every single aspect of the zoning ordinance. That's the building department and, uh, Mr. Dromy's, uh, division. So, you know, I'm inclined to defer to Counsel Brown. Um, it's his neck that's gonna be on the chopping block if neighbors are calling and upset. And he's not gonna extend himself and say that this is a betterment for the community unless he really believe that for all the neighbors and the abutters that are right there. We haven't heard anybody complain who abuts it. We haven't received any opposition in all this time, including the continued hearing that we had. And so for that reason, I intend to support it and support Counsel Brown and, uh, Mr. Hussein in this endeavor. I think that Counsel Gomez's point is a good one. Mr. Hussein, you gotta recognize that if you violate by keeping that trailer there, we can't save you. So if you don't get your variance and the building commissioner wants to go out and give you a ticket every day because that's in violation, you can't come crying to us because there's nothing we can do about it other than change your zone to industrial A, which I would never favor, or allowing tractor trailers in business A, which I would be similarly opposed to. So with that said, um, I think everybody made some really good points and I would like to vote for it tonight for that reason.
Thank you, Counsel Fenton, Counsel Brown, followed by Counsel Ramos. Uh, Phil, I noticed you had your hand up. So before I, Phil, did you have something that you wanted to say?
Yeah, I just, to, to Counsel Gomez's point, again, what I send you guys is my recommendation for conditions. The council has certainly the option to add, delete, or amend. So I guess, you know, if, if the council, if, if the council is looking to provide Mr. Hussein with an option to keep the trailer, then the condition that the trailer be removed should be taken out of the special permit. Because if that condition remains, even if he gets the variance, he would have to come back in and amend the special permit to get rid of that condition. So i- if it's the will of the council to allow him that option, I, I would just say to, to delete that condition.
Yes.
Obviously, that's, that's a different story, but I, I just don't want it to pass as is.
May I speak, Mr. President?
Hold on, hold on, hold on. I, I. Phil Drom finishes. The floor is Counsel Brown's and then will follow by Counsel Dabila.
Condition number seven.
Condition. Are you finished?
Yeah, I'm finished. Yep, that's it.
Counsel Brown, the floor is yours, followed by Counsel Dabila and then Counsel Ramos. Sorry.
I want to commend, um, my, uh, city counselor Fenton for articulating it in a way that I couldn't do it. Um, I think I might be a little closer to you after today. You are my brother, okay? What the issue was, was it was bully ball. See, I understand what goes on in my city and in my area every single day. So for a city counselor to just pop up and visit, I know that Mr. Hussein, he pays the local guys who are in there drinking to clean up the area. So if you might see a little trash here and there, I inspect my area. See why other people are like doing teak-ing and human resource stuff. I'm in my, I, 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 I'm there. I live right down the street from him. So I see my area. I know what he does. Um, it was a, 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 a tactic where they went in there and they were doing things, I think harassing him. And I had to talk to people and tell them that that wasn't acceptable. I won't get into it, but it was a practice that I believe me in my district. It won't happen again. This man, he helps the district. What I need, I know people like Jesse Letterman. I know Fenton. I know I want to meet, I, I told him I will, I want him to meet with Adam. I want you guys to show him how can you keep this business intact and not get in trouble for it. So as far as me sitting there saying, I want him to get rid of it, no, he helps the community. I need my colleagues to show me and show him how can he keep it? Because he does a service. I don't want him to get rid of it. Orlando, you know how to, uh, build something. Build something for it. If you can't have a tractor trailer, it's, it's a fence that's huge. He redid it. He's gonna redo the whole area, spend over about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Um, so it's, it's not an eyesore. It's not what you think. Um, I need from my colleagues to show this, um, my, just my constituents and show me maybe how to make sure he can keep it, because he does a recycling job for the community. Instead of people sitting there throwing their stuff on the, on the side of the road, he takes their stuff and after a certain amount of time, he takes his trailer and he brings it and he recycles it. So as far as saying I want to put a permit for him to stop doing that, we'd be insane for that. I need you guys to help him, help me, help him know how to do it. That's, I, and, and, and that's all I, I have to say. And once again, I commend my colleague. Uh, you know, that's, that's what I need. I want it then to meet him. So even, uh, Counsel Ramos, I know Counsel Ramos, he, he has, um, carpentry. Maybe we can help this individual where he don't have to worry about what he's doing to be fine. But we don't need him to stop doing what he's doing. We just need to correct the fact. He doesn't want to do it. Believe me, he don't want to do it. He's trying to help.
Thank you, Counsel Brown. Uh, I see, and I apologize if I've been going out over here. I see Counsel Whitfield and Counsel Dabila, then Counsel Letterman. So my apologies. Counsel Whitfield, the floor is yours.
Um, I make a motion to move the question.
So there is.
Second.
Point of order.
Questions, it is seconded. There's a point of order.
Until you, uh.
Well, Dabila, um, what, what, what is your point of order, Counsel?
Yes, sir, I do believe that, uh, myself and, uh, I believe Counsel Ramos had stated the intent of making a, adding a new condition.
So there, there have been a number of, um, potential amendments. Um, if we move the question, Counsel Dave, uh, um, Attorney Davis, then are we moving the questions to go straight to a vote, um, which is my understanding?
Yes, it'll be to go straight to a vote because there's been no motions taken for the amendments yet.
Okay, um, so.
Mr. President.
Counselors know that there has been a motion to move the questions and it has been seconded by, I believe, Counsel Gomez.
No, no, I didn't say, I didn't say, I didn't second it.
Was there a second to that motion?
Second it.
Counsel.
You can't, you can't. You've got to recuse yourself. You cannot.
Let, let me be clear now. I'll defer to the attorney. Um, I do not believe, uh, Counsel Brown has chosen to recuse himself. And so certainly that is something that, uh, Counsel Brown, in the event there is an issue, he seems to think he is on the right side of things. Uh, and so I would imagine, and I defer to Attorney Moore, uh, if he believes that he does not need to recu- recuse himself, then he can continue to participate. Um, so he has not formally recused himself and he has participated. Uh, so he can second the motion. But on that note, uh, from a legal standpoint, I will defer to Attorney Moore.
As far as Attorney Moore too, as far as for the record, if you think I should, but I don't believe I should have to, Attorney Moore.
I will defer to Attorney Moore. Attorney Moore, are you still on the line, sir?
I, I am still here, Mr. President. Thank you. Just very briefly, I think I've covered this at length. Uh, you know, I think when Counsel Brown stated during the last meeting that he told the petitioner to appear and that he should represent the petitioner himself, that alone is enough to say he has to recuse himself. I don't think it'll have any effect on the actual vote, that being said.
Yeah, and that.
I'll se- I'll second the motion. I'll second it.
So there is a, there is a seconded by Counsel Fenton.
I'm sorry, Mr. President. I didn't quite hear the entire opinion, sir.
I'm sorry?
My apologies, point of order. I didn't hear Attorney Moore's entire opinion, the answer.
Moore, can you repeat what you said, Attorney Moore?
Sure, very quickly, as I said, uh, last time, I think the issue is that, uh, Counsel Brown would be better off recusing himself based on the statement that he made during the prior meeting that he represents the petitioner and told him not to appear. That alone is enough grounds to recuse yourself. I don't think that'll have a final effect on the vote, that being said.
Thank you, uh, Attorney Moore. So there's been a motion made by Counsel Whitfield. It's been seconded by Counsel Fenton.
Mr. President, what other amendments?
I'm sorry, hold on. Let, I had the floor. I don't jump in when everybody else is talking. I want to get the legal opinions of people and I want to hear everybody. But Counsel Dabila, you've been jumping in. Counsel Brown, second, and we got a clarification. And I do want to hear from Counsel Walsh because she's the most senior on the move and if that's possible. That word, senior.
It's not.
Okay, it's not possible. I know we gotta at least make one amendment, but I am tired. So I will withdraw. I will withdraw my motion to move the questions if we're gonna move into amendments. We know, people know if they want the trailer there and they know if they don't. So let's make a decision because this is ridiculous.
So, thank you, Counsel Whitfield. We still are at the stage in which we are asking uh, questions of the petitioner and we have not opened up the gate as of yet. Counsel Whitfield has withdrawn her motion. Um, with that being said.
Mr. President.
Counsel Walsh.
Thank you. Um, I have had my, I have had my hand up and I've been waving to you and I've pressed that little blue button for a long time now. And I, and I'm happy that, uh, Counsel Whitfield, you refer to me, uh, as, as the dean and the senior member. And, uh, I'd like to say that I agree with Attorney Moore's assessment. A city counselor cannot represent a petitioner, uh, uh, e- even if his intentions are good. It sets a terrible precedent and I am concerned that if you do not recuse yourself, uh, Counsel Brown, you're gonna impact the validity of our vote. I'm, I'm not sure. I did try to reach you on that, um, Attorney Moore, on that particular question. I think you have to recuse yourself for, for this to be a legitimate vote. And I am concerned about saying a president of having a counselor represent a petitioner. On my time on the council, that has never happened. And I think it's, it is, your mentor, Counsel Whitfield, gave you advice. I think you should follow the advice that she gave you.
Thank you, Counsel Walsh. Uh, we have Counsel Letterman, followed by Counsel Dabila.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman.
Other questions for the petitioner?
So first I'd say I recognize that the process is, is waning on and, and this hearing may be going a little longer than we expected it to, but um, this is the process and it's in place for a reason and I value it and I know we all do. So, so I agree with Counselor, Counsel Gomez, Counsel Fenton, and Counsel Brown that, that the, the proposal is a betterment to the neighborhood. No one's disagreeing with that. I want to support it. To the same point that was raised, and, and we haven't heard as much from the petitioner on this as I'd like to, is that as I. is that, as I said previously, number, condition number seven that we're currently considering is to remove the trailer. And so if the tire recycling is a big part of the business and is a benefit to the community and is a benefit to the customers, I, I just want to understand from the petitioner either, what he's gonna do, um, relative to that, if he's gonna put a different process in place, um, to, you know, to Counselor Brown's point. So I just want to know what his plan for the tire-
You'll start the variance and you'll remove the trailer and then start serious.
Hussein. Do you have an answer to Counselor Letterman?
Is muted. You have me? I mean, is it? Is it okay?
Yes.
Okay, so I think I should, uh, uh, that's a very important part of my business, I mean, this thing, uh. So what I can do is, uh, if not, I mean, I will apply, I will try to apply a variance, but, uh, other option is just to, to move it, you know, I mean, uh, I will ask my company to, to remove it. I mean, that's the only thing now.
Counselor Letterman-
But I don't know what to do, what to do with these, I mean, tires gonna be here and there. I'm gonna pile up on the, on the lot, on the same lot, if people can throw it. It's gonna be my responsibility for future, uh, till I own this business to keep removing people's trash and all these things. Uh, it's look like to me like that, like, uh, I will be responsible for, you know, forever, uh, to keeping them on the corner outside, uh, people looking there, you know, uh. Uh, it's, it's not gonna, it's gonna be eyesore for the, for the neighborhood even, you know? I mean, where I can put it, uh, those things, I mean, those tires. If I, my own tires, I can keep it inside, okay, I can keep it in the backside, under the fence, nobody can see. Okay, I'm gonna continue that, that service now, uh, those, uh, which will be eyesore for the neighborhood, uh, right by the fence, I'm gonna start them up over there. I don't understand, I mean, I, sometime in initial, uh, in starting of my business, I call police, uh, you know, I call city, uh, there's people doing that, the trash is here, people throwing tires over here. Nobody took action on those, I mean, nobody did that. And I, I'm tired of that, I, I stopped doing that. And since I plan to move that, uh, lot forward, you know, to, to do something on that lot. So I plan to keep the area clean, to keep this trailer. I mean, and this is, this is a problem from, for, for everyone, it seems to me, uh, except the, the neighborhood. So, okay.
Counselor, move the question, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor Letterman, uh. We have another motion.
Second.
The question that is seconded by Counselor Whitfield. Uh, if this passes, it will end further debate, um, on the motion to move the questions. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
On moving the question and ending debate, Counselor Gomez?
No.
No, Counselor Whitfield?
Yes.
Yes. I'm sorry, hold on one second. Counselor Davila?
No.
No, Counselor Fenton?
Yeah.
Yes, Counselor Current?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Ramos? Yes, Counselor Walsh?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Williams, absent, Counselor Allen?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Letterman?
Is this on moving the question?
It is.
No.
No, Counselor Edwards? Counselor Edwards?
I don't see him.
Uh-
Absent, Counselor Brown?
Um, I'm gonna refer to my mother. She knows she raised me from high school. Counselor Walsh, and I'll recuse myself. You know, I gotta listen to you anyways.
It's okay, baby. Counselor Hurst?
Uh, yes. I believe the motion fails.
It does, that was only seven.
It was only seven. Uh, Counselor Davila? Um-
Thank you, Mr. President.
I thought we needed some of us to move the question.
Oh, super majority, it's two thirds.
It's two thirds.
Uh, thank you, thank you, Mr. President. I'm going to be as briefly as humanly possible because I, uh, I too, I'm tired, I'm hungry, but, uh, press, uh, Counselor Letterman say, this is the process. Uh, and I, the only reason that I'm still engaged is because I do value Counselor Brown's opinion. And so this is the only reason why I'm still entertaining this question. Because honestly, I have a lot of reservations. It will appear to me that Mr. Hussein is playing tic for tac with us and that's not how it works. Uh, so I also, if I do ask for point of order, if I do jump in, is because I am fulfilling my duties and I'm not gonna bottom something that I'm not clear on. And that is my hope, that all my colleagues will stand there. Now, and also there's been a little feedback, a lot of running back and forth with remote access. So that, just to make that very crispy clear. Now, I do have to say that I'm very uncomfortable with this whole thing. Uh, and what will put me at ease is a, the one year review on this, on this special condition. Uh, that's why it will put me at ease, because this is the way I look at it.
You agree with it.
Uh, this is the way I look at it. I do believe that, yes, Counselor Brown knows what's best for his, um, neighborhood. There are no doubt of that. I'm not even gonna touch the, the aspect that Attorney Moore brought up before. Uh, and he has now, it appears to me, Counselor Brown has recused himself and I hope he stays recused. Uh, but you never know what's gonna happen in the future. And so, uh, I'm sorry, Mr. Brown, I do appreciate your, I'm trying to work with you here and, uh, I do appreciate your, your, your behavior, sir. Uh, 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 just, I'm just calling it also. I am trying to work here, Counselor Brown, uh, please respect. Thank you, sir. I do appreciate your opinion, I'm trying to work here. Uh, you know, otherwise I would have already known this from the get-go. So what will make me at ease is a one-year review on this. Uh, and that's, uh, you know, I, again, I asked a little while ago about doing that, I'm, that, adding that condition. I don't know what the process will be, but I don't want that the other day for either Counselor Brown to get stuck or for the residents to get stuck.
So understood, Counselor Davila, we are at the point in the hearing in which we are asking questions of the petitioner. So are there any further questions of the petitioner so we can close that portion of it? And then open up. So Whitfield, I see your hand raised, followed by Counselor Gomez.
Do you have your response? So thank you.
Did you say me?
Yes, Counselor Whitfield, question-
No, it wasn't for the petitioner, it was, at what point do we make the amendment so we can move this meeting forward?
Well, as soon as we, as we get past this portion where, ask the questions of the petitioner, then we can open it up for a minute.
Once the hearing is closed.
Okay, thank you.
Portion of the hearing is closed. Uh, Counselor Gomez?
Yes, Mr. President, so from what I understand, this is not a, uh, a point where I can make the motion. The only reason I voted, uh, to move the question, no, was to remove what Phil told us would stop him, uh, from having to come back and amending the special permit in the future. Uh, I'm not against, uh, a, a yearly review, which I know that we've already put those provisions, which essentially we can't really revocate, uh, uh, or not revocate, but take away, um, the, the special permit regardless. So I'm looking at, can I amend to, to subtract, uh, Amendment Seven, I think it was, to require removing the, the-
Counselor Gomez, if there are no other questions for the petitioner, then we can close this portion of the hearing. It sounds like there are not. At this point in time, uh, this portion of the hearing is closed and we can open it up for debate amongst the council, amendments amongst the council, uh, at, at this point in time. So Counselor- One amendment.
Close the hearing.
The, the, that portion of the hearing is closed. With Gomez.
I just want to make a motion to, uh, to take out, uh, Amendment Seven and I think that, uh, and that's it.
So there's a motion-
A second.
Condition number seven, and it- There's discussion on the motion. Discussion on the motion, Counselor Whitfield.
So taking out Amendment Seven means that he never has to get rid of, rid of the trailer? Is that what that amendment says, um, Counselor Gomez?
Uh, from what I understand, taking out Number Seven, if he was to go and get the variance and he was, uh, he would have to come back, um, to, um, for, for us to be able to have to, uh, amend the, to take Number Seven off anyway, he's still not in compliance regardless because of the zoning ordinance. It was just a condition.
So if he, if we take out Number Seven and he goes for the variance and he pass, he keeps the trailer?
Yeah, and then he doesn't have to, he doesn't have to come back. Because if he gets his variance, he has to come back before us and then we're gonna have to amend, uh, the, and take out Number Seven anyway.
Does he have to come back before us, um, Phil or Attorney Moore?
Phil, can you speak to that, Phil?
So Counselor Gomez is correct. If that condition is left in, he, he, he would have to, even if he, even if he is granted the, the variance, he would still have to come back to the city council and amend the permit to take that condition off at a later date. By removing that condition doesn't arbitrarily allow him to keep the trailer on. The trailer itself is still a zoning violation that will, has to be addressed. So at some point, if condition number seven is removed, the owner of the property and the petitioner still needs to apply for that variance in order to keep it. If he doesn't get the variance, then the trailer would then need to be removed, even without a condition on the special permit.
Okay, thank you for that clarification.
Counselor Ramos on the motion to amend the condition.
Yeah, Mr. President, I, I know that we've gone long enough for this, I don't want to prolong it any, any longer. Um, I am still concerned about just outright removing condition number seven. I would, uh, you know, ask my colleague if he would consider, um, amending the, the amendment to state that, uh, the, to give the petitioner a choice as, you know, if, if he, so that if he does get approved, um, for a variance, uh, that he can keep the trailer. So, um, you know, it would read that he would have to remove the trailer or get a variance. That way he has a choice of, of whether, that gives him a choice if he wants to keep the trailer. I feel uncomfortable just removing it altogether just because, um, you know, I still think that, uh, anyone who wants to store, uh, a trailer on their property should have the proper permits and/or, uh, permission from the city of Springfield, rather than just, um, have it outright. So, um, you know, that, that would be my recommendation.
Mr. President?
Thank you, uh, Counselor Ramos, um, Counselor Gomez, was that your, was that your motion, Counselor Gomez?
Yes, sir, it was.
Okay, did you want to amend your motion after hearing from Counselor Ramos?
Not that I, not that I want to, uh, make a, uh, to change my amendment. It's, um, regardless, taking it off or adding, um, his suggestion, it still doesn't give him the permission, this is what I'm trying to, I'm trying to get people to understand, or my colleagues. It still doesn't give him the permission to keep the, the, the trailer there. So the Number Seven is just like extra, uh, an extra add that I guess planning put in there to make it stricter. Essentially, he's still, regardless if we take off of Seven, he is still, he is still in, um, in, um-
Non-compliance.
I do something. I'm, I'm sorry, Counselor Gomez, that was my fault.
Quite all right. All I'm saying is simply that if we ru- remove Number Seven and if he was to, uh, acquire the variance from the, from, from that board, that he would have to come back and change it. But essentially removing Number Seven does not stop him or does not stop him, um, stop the planning board from holding him in compliance. Because regardless of Number Seven being there or not, the, the, in the zoning ordinance, which we're not changing the zoning ordinance, still holds him accountable to the fact that he needs to move it anyway, regardless of us saying it or not. And it to, it puts him in a compliance that he is still risking two hundred dollars a day, which is, I think Number Seven is completely redundant to, to the fact of what the zoning ordinance does and what has been written.
So there is a motion on the floor by Counselor Gomez. It's been seconded by Counselor, uh, Finn. On the motion, we have Counselor Whitfield, uh, and then we also have Counselor Brown, although, um-
No, he can't speak.
Attorney Moore and whether he can see once he recuses himself. But Counselor Whitfield, on you.
Um, so what is the timetable? So does he have until infinity to get the variance? Or do we want to put, he has a certain amount of time to get the variance? I really like, um, Counselor Ran- Ramos' suggestion that we keep it and say he has a certain amount of time to get the variance or he has to move the vehicle. Because just an infinity amount of time, I don't think is beneficial. Or like I would like to hear from Phil, is there a certain amount of time that he has to get the variance by, um, code enforcement law? I'm not really sure how that would work.
May I answer that question? Hello? This is Hussein.
No, you can't speak. The hearing is closed.
Okay, thank you.
Phil?
Well, I mean, technically he's in violation today. So, you know, you know, theoretically, i- if, you know, you, you certainly have the, have the, uh, authority to add a condition about timing. Um, but if, if, if he continues to keep the trailer there without getting the variance, he would continue to get cited. And just to clarify, he was cited, I don't think he was fined yet. But, you know, the city's first step is usually to cite somebody and give them an opportunity to rectify the situation. I would assume is after, after a few times of, of being cited and not resolving the question and not getting the variance, the city would move toward a, a, a fine situation. But, um, but certainly if, if you, if the council deems it necessary, you can certainly add a timeline to it.
So I would feel more comfortable, Counselor Gomez, if we at least added a timeframe to it. And Phil, just, I'm sorry, this will be my last question, I promise. Um, if we added a timeframe, would that, um, prevent him from getting cited further until the time period is up?
Yeah, I, I, I think if the special permit is granted with the, with the understanding that he's gonna move forward to try and rectify it, I think that, I think that the city would hold off on fining him until one way or the other.
So I really think that's more of a benefit for him and that's it.
Thank you. Um, Counselor Brown wishes to speak as he has his hand raised in the queue. I guess the question is, does he have to recuse himself on participating in the hearing, uh, completely? Or is it just the question?
Mr. President, you're asking me, I assume.
Of course, yes.
I, I think, uh, the recusal is to all participation, it really should just be until the final vote is taken. I think we're approaching that point now, so.
I mean, I, 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 I'm kind of, um, I do understand a lot of that stuff also. As long as I'm not, I, 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 I can, if I say I represent him and I recuse myself, wouldn't I be able to speak?
No, Counselor, you could sway the other counselors to vote. So the, the act of you participating could change the proceeding.
Uh, excuse me, Counsel, excuse me, Counsel. It's nothing on this particular thing. The only thing I'm asking my other counselors, is there something that they can do? Being just a rookie counselor that might be able to aid, um, my constituent in getting the proper licensing, um, to be able to have the trailer there. That's what I would really want him to be able to do. So I don't know if it's okay for me to say he doesn't know how to say, I don't know how to say it, I'm kind of-
No, no.
Do, is it okay for me to say that? Is there some-
Counselor, Counselor, if you had not spoken until the proceeding ended and then this proceeding started where the counselors could speak and then you talked about how you, you were in favor of the proposal, that would be okay. But you spoke during the portion where the petitioner himself was presenting and then you said that you represented him directly. So those words mean that now you can no longer participate as a voting member.
But what I mean as directly, I meant, when I mean directly, it's paraphrasing someone who voted for me where I, um, represent everyone who voted for me directly. I wasn't able to truly clarify it before I was, uh, actually disconnected. So that's what I meant it, so in a court of law, if that's what I meant, is, does that reclude me?
I mean, there's a video recording of the proceeding, we can go back and look at it, but my- I mean, there's a video recording of the proceeding, we can go back and look at it, but my, my recollection is that you said that...
I am saying...
...you would not come, and that you said you were presenting.
Mr. President, you've got...
I remember, I could be wrong, but we have a video recording, we can always listen to it.
Yes, and, and...
You know?
So, Counsel, what, what, Attorney Brown, I mean Attorney Moore is going to give his record.
All I'm saying is, all I wanna do...
If you wanna, hold on, hold on, let me finish, if you wanna continue to participate, then that's on you, and at the end of the day, um, you know, if the petitioner suffers as a result, or if, if, if something happens, uh, from an ethical standpoint, hearing, that's on you. So if you wanna speak, you continue to raise your hand, and you continue to speak, that, that is totally on you.
Well, well, Mr. President, I'm speaking and I'm raising my hand, I'm sure you've seen that, um, it's not something that you really have to let me know, it's been going on since the whole time, okay? Um...
Go on, you do it, sir.
All I'm asking is, I'm just asking my colleagues if they can, at some way, show this individual how to keep the trailer there. It's something that we want there, we want the ability for him to be able to recycle the waste material, that's all I want.
Thank you, Counselor Brown, Counselor Letterman, on the motion.
On, on the motion, Mr. Chairman, um, I think that I would be comfortable with Counselor Ramos' amendment, I would suggest that we adopt that, because similar to what Counselor Whitfield said, right now, it sort of leaves it in limbo, whereas the condition of saying, either it has to be removed, or a variance has to be granted, would stop the special permit itself from issuing until the problem is resolved. And so, in other words, once he either receives the variance, or removes the proper trailer, then the permit would issue, just similarly to how, once he landscapes, once he paves, once he fences, it's just another condition, so, that would probably, that or a time limit, but that would kinda solve the problem if we took Counselor Ramos.
Thank you, Counselor Letterman, uh, Counselor... Counselor Gomez, I'm sorry?
No, just, just, just on the motion, um, I'm welcome to any other motion after this one, if they wanna add a time limit, then let this motion happen, and then they can add another time, they can add another motion to add that.
Completely. You do not have to do anything with respect to changing your, your motion, uh, Counselor Davila.
Uh, just, uh, could you, uh, to Sir Ramos? I'm sorry, Counselor Gomez, would you mind re-stating your motion, sir?
Uh, Counselor Davila, all I'm stating is that I am in favor of amending, eliminating, uh, Number Seven for the sake of further, uh, further work from the council, if he has to go get a variance, but I welcome any other amendments after we dispose of this amendment, because we're stuck on this amendment, and we're not, and we're talking about different proposals and different issues that we wanna add to, which I'm not neglecting or negating, but if we don't dispose of this motion, we're stuck in still trying to cross the threshold, and at least start with another motion if that need be. We're, we're...
I just said I'm clear, you, well, you're talking about, uh, Number Seven, getting rid of Number Seven.
Yes, getting rid of Number Seven, and then after the fact, they can add a time limit or another amendment, um, when it comes to the recommendations or the conditions, yes, sir.
Thank you, Counselor Gomez, thank you, Mr. President.
There's a motion on the floor, it's been seconded by Counselor Fenton, uh, seeing no more hands raised in the queue, uh, Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll on the motion?
Counselor Whitfield?
I'm sorry, I just think that if we remove the amendment, we're gonna bring it right back. That doesn't make sense to me, but I guess it's his option not to add a timeframe, because that's really all we're asking to do, is to say, get a variance in a certain amount of time, and if not, you have to remove the trailer. So if you, if you say, we're gonna eliminate, removing the trailer altogether, then you gotta make another amendment to bring back Seven, and add a variance and a timeframe, so that's what is not clear to me. So I can't support the amendment if we're gonna get rid of it to bring it back.
So Madam Clerk, seeing that there are no more hands in the queue, on the motion, can you please call the roll?
On the motion to eliminate Condition Number Seven, Counselor Gomez?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Whitfield?
No.
No, Counselor Davila? Counselor Davila?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Fenton?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Curran?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Ramos? No, Counselor Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Williams, absent, Counselor Allen?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Letterman?
No.
No, Counselor Edwards? Counselor Edwards?
Counselor Edwards has left the meeting.
I'm absent, Counselor Brown, um, recused, Counselor Hurst.
Yes, uh, the motion passes, is there any more discussion on this special permit, uh, or amendments before we move to a vote?
If I may, Mr. President, I'd like to make an amendment, a motion. I would like to, uh, make a motion that, uh, actually, uh, if I just give you a quick second, Mr. President. Uh, I believe, um, uh, recommendation, Condition Number Twenty, that this, uh, special permit be reviewed on one year, on a yearly ba, on, on a year from today, if approved, for yearly review.
So, so there's a motion on the floor for this special permit, uh, to be reviewed in a year, it's been seconded by Counselor Gomez. I mean, I'm sorry, it's been seconded by Counselor Gomez on the motion, Counselor Whitfield?
What does the review do, does the review take something out, does it put something back? Um, I'm a little bit confused, so we come back for a yearly review for what? We just gonna re, how does that work?
You gotta just vote on it.
Review, Phil?
Well, I mean, it, it's technically gonna do what the zoning enforcement officer does on a yearly basis anyway, is go out and, and ensure that the conditions that are placed on the special permit have been followed. I, I don't know what the authority of the council is, they haven't, but, um, you know, it, it, I, I suppose it gives the city council an opportunity to re, to review it in addition to the, to the, the standard kind of review that's posed.
But does it give us any, um, authority to revoke it, to, what is it gonna do?
I mean, I, I, I guess, I, I'd have to defer to the law department, but I, I mean, I, I guess, I, I, I mean, a review is, is simply that, you'd be able to bring him in, and, and, and if he, if he's followed the, the conditions, great, if he hasn't, I guess you would, you would have the opportunity to ask him why he hasn't, but I don't believe it provides much of a, uh, enforcement power, but...
So, there, so there's no review, I mean, there's a review, but there's no condition to remove the trailer if he doesn't get a variance? A- as it stands?
Well, but if, but if he hasn't gotten the variance, he, he's still gonna be in violation of the zoning. So I would assume, because this is on the radar of code to start with, they're gonna, they're gonna keep... That he either gets the variance, or the trailer is removed.
So a- as it stands right now, he could keep being cited, so you could go out tomorrow and cite him, and cite him again the next day, and then start charging him a fine, so he has no protection as of right now, once we approve this special permit?
Well, I, I, I guess, he, he, if it's, if it's his, you know, choice to move forward with the variance, I think if he's in the process of, of applying for that, and I, I don't wanna speak for code, but I believe, as with people who get cited for running an operation without a special permit, we tend to say, okay, start the process and see if you can get it, and at that point, the city kinda holds off on its, on its, you know, enforcement powers until the special permit is either approved or not approved. So, I would assume code, if, you know, again, putting it back on the owner, that within a certain amount of time, you know, he, he is gonna have to apply, code is gonna, is gonna ensure that, I, I believe, because I know they, they've been citing him on this, so...
Well, fine, let code do its job.
So there's a motion on the floor, um, by Counselor...
See, that's revolving around this conversation, and what Tim just said, and what Rob just said, it's just...
Uh, can we please view our computers, there's been a motion made by Counselor Davila for a year, I believe it was seconded by Counselor Gomez, on the motion. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
On the, on the motion to amend the conditions and add an annual review, Counselor Gomez?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Whitfield?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Davila?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Fenton?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Curran?
No.
No, Counselor Ramos?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Williams, absent, Counselor Allen?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Letterman?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Edwards, absent, Counselor Brown, recused, Counselor Hurst.
Yes, amendment passes, are there any more amendments or discussion on this special permit before we move to a vote? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll on this special permit, it requires two-thirds vote for a passage?
On, I, I need a motion to approve in a second, please?
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
On the motion to approve this special permit, Counselor Gomez?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Whitfield?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Davila?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Fenton?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Curran?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Ramos?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Williams, absent, Counselor Allen?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Letterman?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Edwards, absent, Counselor Brown, recused, Counselor Hurst.
Yes, uh, this, uh, special permit is approved, uh, Counselor Gomez, on the reasons?
Reasons for a granted permit, this specific site is in appropriate location for such a use and structure and condition. The use as developed will not adversely affect the neighborhood. Adequate and appropriate facilities will be provided for the proper operation of the proposed use to incorporate the planning staff analysis into the decision at the basis of its findings, thank you and congratulations.
Madam Clerk, um, can you please call the roll on approving the conditions?
On approving the reasons for this special permit at 1103 State Street, Counselor Gomez?
George Floyd, 2020, yes.
George Floyd, 2020, yes, Counselor Whitfield?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Davila?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Fenton? Counselor Fenton?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Curran?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Ramos?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Williams, absent, Counselor Allen?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Letterman?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Edwards, absent, Counselor Brown, recused, Counselor Hurst.
Yes, the special permit is granted, and Madam Clerk, is there any further business before the council?
There's no further business before the council.
Stand adjourned until our next regular meeting, Monday, January 22nd, counselors, have a great evening.
Good night.